Okay, welcome everyone. We are going to call the special June 29 meeting of the Norbert Planning Commission of Order. It is 7:08 PM.
This meeting is being recorded.
It is 7:08 PM on June 29. This meeting is being conducted in person at Borough Hall in Norbert and is also being conducted over Zoom. I would like to begin by welcoming everyone back to Borough Hall and hopefully we'll get a even better welcome next time with better air conditioning, but thank you. I'd like to start by asking our new Borough Manager Samantha Bryant to introduce herself and also to go over any meeting protocols tonight that we should be aware of.
Yeah, thank you Todd. It's really great to be here tonight, really good to see and meet the members of the Planning Commission in person as well as on Zoom. So as mentioned before, anyone who is here in person, your Zoom needs to be muted and your computer speakers also need to be muted. For anyone participating remotely, you are welcome to unmute and comment when appropriate during the meeting. For the public comment portion of the meeting, we're going to ask people who are here in person when you're called to speak. Hope we have a great meeting tonight and I'm really glad to be here.
Okay, thank you. I assure you, we have no burning issues at the Planning Commission. So first thing I'd like to do is welcome our guests on Zoom and I'd like, if anyone who's listening by Zoom tonight is having trouble hearing or would like to make us aware of any technical difficulties on your end, could you please do so either in the chat or by raising your hand or by saying something? Everyone okay? If for some reason you're experiencing difficulties, please write a note in the chat and I'll ask, Samantha, can you keep an eye on that and remind us to speak loudly or clearly so that you can hear the proceedings in the meeting? And I appreciate you bearing with us as this is a new experience for all of us. Tonight's agenda, we have three agenda items. We will quickly approve minutes from a previous meeting. The main item in our agenda is the discussion of the preliminary plan for Three Elmwood and the applicants team will be joining us by Zoom and presenting by Zoom tonight. And during that agenda item, we will take public comment on that matter. And then the third item for the evening is public comment on any other matters that people have come to speak about. So that is our agenda for the evening. So I'd like to begin by asking for approval of the minutes of our April meeting. They were submitted to you earlier today. I did receive correction from one Planning Commissioner whose name was spelled wrong and I'm going to blame that on Otter AI, but we will correct that. Does anyone else have any other comments, questions, corrections about on the April minutes as presented? Would anyone like to make a motion? Jim, Jim Spear moves to approve the minutes as presented and with the corrections that I've already noted, does anyone like to second that? We'll give that to Heidi actually. You put a little sticker on your comment. And all in favor of approving the minutes as presented with the corrections that I've already outlined, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the minutes of April are approved, I will correct them as requested and format them properly and submit them to the Borough Office for posting on our webpage. So, next item of business tonight is a preliminary, the discussion of the preliminary plan for Three Elmwood. And I am pleased to note that a full complement of the applicants team is here with us tonight to discuss that application. As is our standard procedure, I would like to offer the applicant opportunity to describe their proposal and the work they've done on it since we saw the tentative and approved the tentative plan earlier this year. I will ask the Borough Engineer and the Montgomery County Planning Commission to comment on the application and then entertain comments from the Planning Commission and then the public on this. I'm sorry, is there a question?
Do you want me to copy the plans?
I only have one copy of the plans.
Okay.
So I'm sorry about that. I only have one paper copy, but you can, you have them online, you can look at them on your computer if you'd like. So again, welcome to the applicants team. Thank you for bearing with us in this experimental meeting format. Generally, it's either the Attorney Fred Fromhold or Chris Young who facilitates your presentation. So I'll offer you the opportunity to introduce your team and lead us through a presentation of your proposal. Either Fred or Chris or whoever else would like to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Bressi. This is Fred Fromhold. I will take a crack at this and I just have a couple of preliminary comments. And my first is a question as to whether I can be heard by all of you. Okay, that is good. I note that when members of the Planning Commissioner are speaking, that the yellow box that you typically see around the Zoom speaker was not registering. In fact, you appear to be muted by the designation, Mr. Bressi, by your picture, although you're not. You're speaking and we can hear you. So I will say it's a little harder to identify everyone on the Zoom screen. Normally, the Planning Commission is all sitting together, the applicants team is sitting together and we're all a little scattered here. So we appreciate that and hope you do. I do think I've identified that all of our team are here as you mentioned. And what we would like to do is make a little bit of a presentation to you. If there at any point you would see that this might be handled differently, you'll let us know. But our thought was to go through the plans, you know, in a succinct but thorough fashion, we hope. And we start off with the understanding that the plan about which we will be speaking tonight was approved by both Norbert and Lower Marion Township back in February, on February 17th, as a tentative sketch plan. So the basic lot layout, the number of units and so forth, all of that was approved with the tentative sketch approval, subject to quite a number of conditions, of course, that needed to be complied with as we move forward with our preliminary plan. And in addition to those conditions, of course, there are the code requirements that are specifically applicable to preliminary plans. Significant among them, the stormwater management requirements, the landscaping requirements, which our plan addresses. And we will have Chris Young, the civil engineer for this project, who is very familiar to you, as well as Bernd Panzak, the landscape architect, talk to you about the plans, the civil drawings and the landscaping plans. Also, John Hertz, the architect for this project, is here tonight and he'd like just to go over with you the proposed homes and the salient features of those homes. And we also have Frank Tavani, our traffic engineer, who was here tonight, to talk about those issues that relate to traffic and relate to access to the site, which is a matter of continued interest as we move forward with the application, notwithstanding the approval of the layout and the driveways that was shown on the plan. There have been, as you are well aware, meetings that have taken place with various officials and commissions, both at Norbert and Lower Marion, with regard to aspects of the plan. And we can cover them as we move through our discussion. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Chris Young, who can share plans. And while Chris is getting ready to do so, I will say that we feel that our compliance with the various conditions has resulted in a better plan, has resulted in really fine treatment, as you will hear from Bernd Panzak, with regard to the wetlands and, or I'm sorry, the floodplain and the repairing plantings around the stream. But we'll go through all of that with you. So Chris, are you ready?
I am. Thank you Fred.
And finally, before I end, Mr. Falcone, who happens to be a very important part of this, the applicant, he's here also this evening.
Thanks Fred. So hopefully you can hear me speaking and hopefully you can also see my plan now.
Yep, we can.
Okay, so as Fred said, there was a tentative sketch plan approved for this project in February. At that time, it was a four-page plan set and so it showed, you know, the layout just like this. It had the impervious coverage bulk zoning information, but it didn't have all of the engineering to go with it. And so we now have a 10-page plan set that has all of the grading, all the utilities, the stormwater management, the erosion controls, all the details and appropriate notes. And so I just want to start with a couple of the changes in the layout since the tentative sketch plans. The property lines are in exactly the same location. The buildings are in exactly the same location and are the same size. The entrance and exit driveways are in the same location. We did add some curb to the side of those to help with the landscaping. One of the changes we did make is the parking in the rear and in the center. We angled those parking spaces and the purpose of that was to try to get the dumpster pad more behind Lot 3 so it wasn't as easily seen from the street, from either driveway. So we moved that to the back. But other than that, it's pretty close to what you saw before. The public gathering space is now further refined. Bernd could talk about that, the landscape architect, and what their idea was for that area. But if I zoom out here, I just want to quickly page through this plan set. First page is the illustrative site plan. We have some color on there. Second is the record plan that shows meets and bounds and setbacks. Third is what we call notes and references sheet. I'm sure you can't see any of this, but we have a block for the zoning compliance for both Lower Marion Township and for Norbert Borough. We do comply with all of the bulk zoning. We're not asking for any variances, but we have calculations of the impervious coverage for each lot. The next page is the existing condition slash demolition plan. As you know, it's a vacant site here on the west side of the stream and so the only removals are the existing sidewalk right next to the curb. The fifth sheet is our grading and utility sheet. I'm going to stop here for a little bit. This plan is a busy plan with all of the grading and utilities on it. We did color the utilities. Water lines are in blue, sewer lines are in green, electric are red and gas is yellow, similarly to the way that they would be painted out if one called did that in the street. In the tentative sketch plans, we had shown an underground stormwater management system, but we did some infiltration testing. We actually did infiltration testing in two locations, but we dug two other test pits. Unfortunately, the soils were not good. We did not find that infiltration was feasible. And so what we've designed here is a rain garden to control the runoff from the site and the rate control and to provide some water quality. You can see that the site, we grade down from both of the driveways. This driveway, the entrance driveway grades down from the street about 6%. The exit driveway grades down from the street at 10%. And so both of those are grading down to the back so that the rear garages are down to the lower level than what you would see from the front of the site. Because of that, we have a retaining wall on the high side of the parking lot that's really cutting the parking lot into grade. And then we have a retaining wall on the low side, which is holding the parking lot up a little bit. One of the other changes I should have mentioned here is we made a little change behind Lot 4 with the walkway to clean up that area and get some green spaces instead of as much paving as we had originally. We did the same thing behind Lot 2 and added some steps so that the residents could walk down into the floodplain area. The next sheet is the stormwater management detail sheets. We also added some profiles of the site that were requested from the conditions of approval. And maybe if you don't mind, I'll talk quickly about the conditions of approval. That's something that Lower Marion typically does when they approve a plan, they put together a list of conditions that the applicant needs to comply with. And so that was one of the requests. And so we also submitted a response letter to all of those conditions of approval, to also the Borough Engineers' Review Letter, the Lower Marion Township Engineers' Review Letter, as well as the Borough Zoning Officer Letter. This sheet seven is the erosion and sediment control plan. In Lower Marion Township, they require during construction stormwater management. And so we are showing a during construction stormwater management basin in the rear of the site that's larger than the rain garden to control the stormwater flows during construction. The next sheet is Page 8, which are the erosion control details, and then Page 10 are other various construction details. So that's a quick overview of the plans. As Fred said, we have had several meetings. We had a site meeting with some members of Borough staff to discuss the wooden bridge as required by one of the conditions of approval. We had a site meeting to discuss the concept plan, concept landscape plan, and also called a site assessment plan by our floodplain specialist. That site meeting was with the Norbert EAC, with the Lower Marion EAC, and the Lower Marion Conservancy was also there. We then since also met with the Shortridge Civic as well as the Norbert Civic in a Town Hall meeting. And at that Town Hall meeting, we really thoroughly went through the traffic, although Frank is here and he'll talk, you know, a little bit the traffic tonight. At that EAC meeting, Bernd went thoroughly through the landscaping, but he's going to talk a little more tonight, so everyone on this call is up to speed. I would also like to say, this is the cover letter that we submitted to the Borough back in April with the preliminary plans. And I just want to show this to show all of the different pieces that were submitted here. There was the application and fee, the Montgomery County application, a copy of the cover letter to Lower Marion, a copy of the Loma approval from FEMA, a copy of a trash and recycling services letter from rubbish removal that said that they could service this site, a copy of the sewage facilities planning module exemption, a copy of a water availability letter from Aqua, maneuverability diagrams, stormwater management calculations, traffic impact studies, stream assessment summary, architecture elevations, landscape lighting, maintenance and operation plans prepared by Black and Thomas Panzak, and bicycle pedestrian study plans prepared by Black and, and then the preliminary plans. So there was a great deal of information submitted at the preliminary plan stage. I'd also like to make-
Chris, just a question. You said the Loma approval from FEMA. What is Loma?
Good question Fred. I cannot think of it off the top of my head, but essentially what the Loma stands for. But essentially what that letter is, is this site had a floodplain line running through it. It was Zone A, which for FEMA is a line that is not studied and it's just an assumed line. And so as required by the Borough and the Township, we had to calculate the location of that line and the watershed above the property. We did that. In some locations, the floodplain got a little bigger, in some locations it got a little smaller. And so we submitted that to both the Borough and Township for review once there. The floodplain consultant was happy with the revisions. We made revisions several times. Then we submitted to FEMA and then FEMA approved the new line. So now that calculated line is official from FEMA.
Thank you.
Sure. One other thing I wanted to mention is, I think everyone knows there is a, this site has a municipal boundary going through it. You can see my hand here on the screen. It runs right through the buildings and kind of curves through the site. And so we did submit this to both Lower Marion and Norbert. In the tentative sketch process, we had some combined meetings. This one is just Norbert. In the Lower Marion process, the way that it works, when we make that initial submission in April, they schedule us for a Planning Commission meeting, which is July 12th. And they require that we submit for what's called their SOPI date, the signs out, plans in. That happened to be this past Friday, the 25th. Lower Marion, after submission, they have a land development committee where they make its members from the Township Engineer, the EAC, the Fire Department, Police Department, Plane Department, they all have some knee jerk reactions and make comments. And so when we make that SOPI submission, we address those comments. In this case, we also had review letters from the Norbert Engineer and the Norbert Traffic Engineer. And so with that submission on Friday, the 24th, we did address all of the comments from the Borough Engineer and Traffic Engineers' Review Letter. Now certainly because it's only been a few days, I know that they have not had a review and we didn't expect that they would have. But we did just want to mention that we made those changes. I think the most significant change, these are the plans you're looking at on the screen now, are from Friday. The most significant change is the change to this wall on the northern portion of the site. Both the zoning officer and Township Engineer identified a zoning issue with that wall that it can't be more than six feet high in the setback. And so we adjusted the location of that wall. It was at nine feet. And so we adjusted the location so it could be brought down to six feet high so we could comply with that code section. When we did that, we really decreased some of the paving, which I know, you know, many people had been asking about throughout the process. And so that did reduce one of the parking spaces in that Unit 4 garage. We will still have the garage door in the back for access if someone had, you know, if someone wants to park their bikes or if they have a motorcycle or moped or just, you know, smaller car or don't mind backing up a few times. It's not impossible to get in and out there, but it's not a typical backup area that we could show standard passengers or vehicle getting in and out. So that's really the major change from those plans, just so everyone's aware. We have also noted on the plan, since that submission, two waiver requests. One is the waiver for infiltration, which we were aware of because we couldn't get the infiltration. And in the stormwater code, it says, you know, if it's infeasible to get infiltration on the site, then you should request a waiver. And that's really a, you know, different from other sections in the site or in the code where, you know, other code sections ask you to do something, but it doesn't say if you can't ask for a waiver. In this code section in stormwater, you know, it's known that not all sites are going to be able to infiltrate. And this is a perfect example, given how close we are to the floodplain. It's not surprising that the soils were poor. So we do note that waiver. The other waiver request is for radiuses in the parking area to be less than five feet. And so we did add a waiver request, this radius up here in the upper portion next to parking space number eight, that is five feet. This section here in between the trash and parking space 14 is only two feet. You know, we did that to get a little more green area there and get some more plantings. If we were not granted the waiver, essentially we would just have this section of curb come right over and put a five-foot radius in the curb there. And so this isn't one of those waivers that we can't have, but we think it's appropriate to have that waiver. It's really getting us a little bit of extra green space. There's two other places where we have those radiuses. One right by the end of Unit 4 and another by Unit 2 where we have that smaller radius to kind of get as much green space as we can and protect the edge of those buildings. So hopefully that wasn't too long of a presentation. If it's okay, I think that pass it on to John, the architect next, so he can show his architectural elevations, unless there's a specific question that someone would like to ask of me before I pass it along. Could certainly come back to me later.
Why doesn't your team continue as you're planning to and show us? We'll hold off on questions until we hear from your team.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Bressi.
John, you are on mute and I guess you'll need to come off mute. You are. You're good.
Okay. All right. So we presented these plans in April and we have made, I think, pretty good efforts to comply with all of the current zoning issues based on exterior forms and exterior materials. Chris and his engineering supplied us with a footprint that we were more than able to work with. So like he said earlier, none of the footprints have changed. All the garages, excuse me, all the garage access is from the back, so all the garage doors are on the rear of the building. And the front porches and front doors are nicely set above the sidewalk level. There's walkways. We're trying a little bit to make these buildings not necessarily look like two units. You know, it's nicer to almost have them look like bigger homes along the curve there. I think we have a nice job. Vince and I, Mr. Falcone and I, going through some of the floor plans and we have some pretty nice layouts there. But I really think that the exteriors are working very well with the existing neighborhood and the sightlines that they present, not only out from the buildings, but towards the buildings from various places, you know, on the ground. Sidewalks on Elmwood Avenue, the sidewalks as you walk down from the intersection to Wynwood Avenue. We're very pleased with them and I think, you know, once everything is finalized, we're going to have some aesthetically pleasing buildings here and everybody should be happy.
Thank you, John. Bernd, if you want to come up to the plate and talk about landscaping.
Sure. Thank you Fred, thank you John, and thank you Chris. I will segue from John quickly into landscape. But first, I'd like to address the streetscape view that would be present once the buildings would be in place. John has prepared this elevation with the buildings, with the topographic changes that are represented in Chris's grading plan. This is Lot Number 4. And Lot Number 3, Lot Number 2, working our way down East Wynwood Road. This is the entry driveway as Chris described. This is the exit drive. Our gathering space is off to the left here and Elmwood Avenue is to the right of the screen. There were concerns about what the landscaping and the transition between the sidewalk and the buildings might look like. And we hope that this particular elevation gives you the idea of, you know, what things would we plan to install there. There's street trees, of course, in front of the buildings at strategic locations between utilities and driveways and the like. So this is just a brief visual of, you know, what the public could expect this project to look like. Just moving on to the plan, I think as Chris mentioned, we've been to several meetings, two EAC meetings and two Shade Tree Commission meetings. We have revised our initial plans to address comments that we heard at each of those meetings. The Lower Marion Shade Tree Commission meeting requested that we look at adding some additional species to some of the frontage street trees here. So we've done that. We've reduced one species, added a different species. So in a sense, we've added more diversity in that streetscape. The Norbert Shade- The Narberth Shade Tree Advisory, we had no shade trees along Elmwood because we believed initially the existing conditions satisfied that requirement. We were requested to and responded to Narberth stack by adding four additional shade trees in the verge in front of our lot one. You know, this gives us a good overview. Lot one is the existing lot that is situated on this site. As Chris mentioned, there is a channelized stream that kind of bisects the site in the north-south direction. That is the stream that has produced the floodplain issues that we are being asked to accommodate. There's a riparian buffer and you can see here on this plan, our riparian buffer is 10 feet on either side of the channelized stream area. That's the buffer that should be planted and we have provided plantings along there. They're all native species. We've got shrub materials and we've got native herbaceous plugs in areas between the shrub materials. We've got trees, but as Chris mentioned, we did have an assessment done by a stream and floodplain and riparian corridor specialist. And they recommended that the trees be kept back at least 10 feet from the edges of the stream corridor. So you can see here are our additional trees. These are shade trees. These are flowering trees. There are existing trees that will remain. These larger light green circles are existing trees. They provide shade now to this stream corridor and really that's what the desire is, is to cool the water, keep that water cool in terms of habitat and so forth. So we've provided the riparian buffer that's required. We've also gone a little bit extra. I would say we have provided no-mo zones along the back of lot one and we have included additional no-mo zones in the floodplain area on lot two. And those no-mo zones are indicated here. This is a no-mo zone. So essentially what we've done is provided, for the most part, a no-mo zone within the floodplain, with the exception of some mode paths that we show here that loop around, that provide the residents of the new homes access to the floodplain. And, you know, the additional feature that we have provided for those residents is a larger expansive mode lawn that we would characterize as their backyard and gives them the ability to throw a frisbee, put out a blanket, eat a picnic down here next to the stream. And, you know, that kind of summarizes what we're doing within the context of the riparian buffer and the floodplain area. We've talked about the streetscape and there are a variety of other plantings. Chris mentioned the rain garden. There are native herbaceous plugs as well as a seed mix that would be applied to these areas. So as Chris mentioned, there would be a water quality component to that stormwater management facility. There are additional seed mixes that would be part of our no-mo concept. And the no-mo concept really is one that's intended to slow water running off the site and adding to the infiltration of that water. And that is extended all throughout the backside of the property. And the other component that Chris had mentioned was a gathering space that was part of the tentative sketch plan. This was showed on the tentative sketch plan in a preliminary sense. We have since looked at that and kind of added an additional walkway, which really provides a kind of a through move. There's a walkway in here and I'll kind of enlarge this a bit. There's a walkway in, there's a bit of a circular area featuring some flowering trees that you see here in pink. There's some benches in here and another walkway that leads out. We like this location. We think it's a strategic location. This happens to be the crosswalk across east Winwood where pedestrians would be coming from Narberth through the tunnel underpass. Folks could meet here, you know, and then proceed perhaps to the south side of east Winwood Road where there is a connecting sidewalk that would connect users up to the commercial sites further west on east Winwood Road. So really that, excuse me, summarizes in general the landscaping. We did add, once we spoke with the respective EACs, we did add additional native species to kind of beef up our native species on the plan. We've got a higher percentage now of natives. And I would say that almost all the species within the floodplain and the riparian corridor are native as well as within the rain garden. We do get a little bit more ornamental, really simply in the areas directly around the foundation areas of the homes. So I guess with that, we were, our office was responsible for looking at the pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. And I do have graphics to share if that is something that we would like to get into now. I wasn't going to go into detail about that. I think some of the significant takeaways from our real analysis and study was that we will be replacing over 400 feet of sidewalk along the frontage at east Winwood Road. Right now, there's a four, four and a half foot sidewalk. Our sidewalk would be increased to five feet. We're also adding a green grassed verge of two feet. So there would be additional comfort provided to pedestrians along that corridor. That would take you down to Elmwood Avenue where there is the pedestrian bridge. We note that the residents of lots two through four, if they were heading by bike or by foot into Narberth, would be most likely coming out to east Winwood Road and either going to Elmwood across the bridge and down into the Narberth area or along east Winwood, across the crosswalk and then further west to points west for those commercial areas. I think it's been, I think it's been noted that there is some challenges with the structure under the wooden bridge. This stream corridor is generally a masonry walled, channelized stream. Once it gets to the right of way of Elmwood Avenue, rather, it does change to gabian baskets. And our stream corridor assessment team had identified that those gabian baskets of which the bridge is set on have been breached, which simply means that the wire basket structure has started to come apart and the rock within those baskets is starting to leak out of there. And as that happens over time, the structure of the bridge will become less and less stable. So that was concluded in a meeting that we had with Narberth officials onsite that was requested and we conducted. But, you know, other than that, there was a greater sort of, greater site-wide review of pinch points and breaks in the pedestrian and bicycle environment. And although we do have those graphics available, if it's necessary at some point later in the, in the meeting, we can, we can share those with you. I would like to, I guess, continue with our presentation and turn it over to our traffic engineer, Frank Tavani, at this point.
Thank you very much, Byrne. As I see that we are now staring down the barrel of the eight o'clock hour and knowing that as the good Mr. Yon noted earlier, that we went through traffic in some great detail at a workshop meeting earlier this year, I guess I have a question I'd like to put to the board, to the commission. As you heard from Chris, there was a response, which I put together that you can see on your screen, to Mr. Schneider's letter dated June 21st. In the interest of time, I could possibly summarize his letter and my responses. His letter starts on page four, if you want to go there, Byrne, that might be helpful. Or in the alternate, we do have another 80 or 90 pages, as you can see in the upper left corner of your screen, which is an annotated version of my study, which I could go through as well, but it's substantially, if not entirely, the same presentation that was made previously. That's not to say that we haven't done anything since the last time we met. There's been a number of emails going back and forth. We have started a highway occupancy permit application with PennDOT, following up on earlier communiques that we've had with them. Of course, having just recently made that application, we haven't had a response from them yet, but we do expect one later this summer. But as you see on your screen here, there's a very, in my opinion, very positive review letter from the borough's traffic engineer. So, Mr. Bresson, I don't know if you'd like to focus on that or something else.
Okay. What I would like, if this is okay with you, there was extensive conversation about your traffic analysis at the town hall and then we had some further conversations about it. I'm wondering if you could summarize anything that has changed either in your methodology or findings since those conversations. I would like to offer Mr. Schneider a chance to make his observations before you respond to them, however. So in your comments right now, if you could simply highlight anything that's changed since, you know, since you submitted your first study and receive feedback on that. And then we can discuss Mr. Schneider's comments after he has a chance to present them.
Certainly. So you're absolutely correct, there have been conversations we've had in the last few weeks, some of which considered the potential impact for some other developments unrelated to the applicant and how they could impact the nearby signalized intersection as well as, of course, other intersections throughout the borough. Rather than proceed with an analysis at that time, which I guess was two or three weeks ago, I was curious to see what the content of Mr. Schneider's review might be. And having just received that last week and his comment four does touch on this, as I mentioned at the outset, I did put together a response, which was only just submitted to Lower Marion Township this past Friday, as Chris noted. So other than those investigations, quantitatively, there hasn't been any, or qualitatively, there hasn't been any quantitative investigations as of yet because I wanted to have more of a conversation with Mr. Schneider about how to proceed based on my response. Some of the other things that we talked about were trying to make some improvements to the pedestrian experience at the signal, which I think Byrne touched on a bit. One possibility there could be extending the, what's called the pedestrian lead interval at that location, as well as possibly changing the pedestrian facility itself, which is currently a standard crosswalk and could be potentially enhanced to be either a continental, sometimes called ladder type crosswalk or other embellishments. But again, we haven't necessarily designed anything yet. We do understand that those are possible considerations and we're willing to have a conversation about that. I don't know if I should go into any more detail because I don't want to take away from Mr. Schneider's letter, but that's essentially where we are presently.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Falcone, is there anyone else on your team who would like to provide any more information at this point?
Fred, you're muted. Fred, you're muted.
Thanks, Byrne. My apology. I think we've given you a pretty good overview of the various aspects of the plan that are of interest and are the subject of conditions of approval. And we're happy now to hear your comments and entertain them and then move on from there.
Okay. Thank you very much, all of you. And thank you for taking the time to walk us through that. I'd like to begin by inviting the folks on the Burnstein and Montgomery County Planning Commission who reviewed this to summarize their comments and questions. The letters in some cases were rather extensive, so if it's at all possible to focus on the issues you've raised that you feel are more significant and would involve more conversation and discussion, I'd appreciate that. I'd like first to ask the borough engineer, Eric Johnson. And Eric, before you begin, I think what's ultimately going to happen is we're going to spend some time focusing on water, stormwater issues. We're going to spend some time talking about traffic, mobility issues, and there are still some zoning issues that are sometimes discussed at this phase and which others have raised. So ultimately, I'd like to try to compartmentalize our conversations. But Eric, why don't you begin, if you could, and go over the highlights of your review with us, the things that you feel are most significant and require discussion.
All right. Thank you and good evening. So as Todd was saying, I had issued a review letter that, you know, went over this plan and there are several of the items in there that are kind of either administrative in nature or will continue to work themselves out as we go through the process. But some of the key items that would probably come up and be good for discussion. The first one, which is item three of my letter, had to deal with a lot of the conditions of preliminary plan approval. And the one has to do with the bridge at Elmwood. As the applicant was stating, we had met with them on site and collectively, the borough is aware of some structural deficiencies that are occurring at that crossing with the gabian walls, you know, that we are actively in the process of developing a plan and going forth with a restoration of that crossing. But as a condition, you know, I think as we proceed through this process, there may still be the opportunity for the applicant to make some assistance in that process. And we'll continue to go down, continue to work on that with the applicant. As they stated, they're in the revised plan, which was not submitted to the borough, so we have only spent a little cursory time looking at it. They are now asking for a waiver on the curb radius, which is kind of a minor item, and allowing that waiver could potentially end up with a better situation in the parking The, as they're describing, the creek does pass through the property and they have received there, it's the letter of map amendment, which is the LOMA, which is an approval from FEMA that allow for the, or assign the actual elevation for the floodplain. And as you can see, they have pretty extensive landscaping through that area. I know there has been previous meetings to discuss this, but that could potentially be an object for discussion on, you know, how we feel or there's any recommendations potentially for that landscaping. So another comment, so I have two comments that kind of have to do with the lots. One is the usual comment that comes up. One is the usual comment that comes up with our code provision, that recommends a general lot width-to-deep ratio of 2.5 to 1. In this case, it starts coming up in Lot 3, where you have the back property line is kind of tapered as you go from right.
It's like Eric got dropped off there. Let me see if I can get him back on the meeting here. In the meantime, Mr. Bressi, who do you think connects from the borough's team? Would you like to have a speak?
It appears that Eric Johnson has dropped off the meeting, and we're going to try to reconnect with him. So, in the meantime, Mike Schneider, would you care to review your comments on the traffic circulation component?
I'll stay on the line for the full presentation of my comments. Is my sound coming through okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I issued a review letter on traffic on June 21st. It consisted of six comments, so I'll just walk through each of my comments, since there aren't too many. The first two had to do with the location of the entrance and exit driveways and their proximity to the traffic signal at East Wynwood and North Wynwood. At times, as presented in the traffic study, the queuing on East Wynwood will sort of block those two access points, both the entrance and the exit. So, comment one was first to ask for clarification and confirmation that those driveways cannot be located any further to the southeast to get as far away from the signal and the queuing as possible. And also in comment one is for the right out, really the concern there is that with a right turn lane there, which has less of a queue than the through movement, there's a concern that, you know, someone making that right out may get a courtesy gap. So if there's a queue for the through lane, you know, those cars might sort of let them get into the queue, and there's a concern that the car exiting the site could inch out into that right turn lane and block the right turn lane to get into there. It's just a function of how those lanes are set up and how the queuing is set up. Comment two is more with the entrance driveway and the left turns in. Per the traffic study, the left turns in would be permitted coming southeast on East Wynwood to turn left into the site. And the concern there is, again, if there's a queue for that through movement, two concerns. One, if someone's waiting to make a left, will they block traffic up back into the signalized intersection as they wait to get through that queue? And two, if they're given a courtesy gap by vehicles in that queue to get through sort of the through lane to get in, they may not see a car coming up the right turn lane, which could be coming up a little bit more speed, and, you know, it's a safety concern for that left turn in. And I kind of included my comment two with requesting the consideration be given to not allow that left turn in for that direction, mostly because of the difference in queues between the through and the right turn lane. Comment three was, Mr. Tavani had touched on the pedestrian lead interval at the signal, so you see the striped crosswalk, and when a pedestrian actuates the button to cross there, when the phase is called up, they get, I believe it's a five-second head start, we'll call it, to where they can get out into the roadway, start their crossing prior to the vehicles coming south on North Wynwood, getting released to turn left on the East Wynwood. So I requested in my comment that Mr. Tavani analyze the intersection through his synchron analysis to see if that lead interval could be increased to give a little bit more of a head start and maybe get more people across without conflicting with vehicles, without sacrificing too much in the way capacity. And I'll just add that that crossing and, you know, the bulk of the signal, any changes to that signal, that crossing are subject to review by both PennDOT and Lower Marion Township. So any changes or any analysis Mr. Tavani does is going to have to be reviewed by both PennDOT and Lower Marion. My comment four, again, Mr. Tavani touched on it, was background traffic. I know there was discussion about other area developments and how they would add traffic to this location. In the traffic study, Mr. Tavani had an assumed background growth rate. PennDOT does have recommended growth rates for different areas based on the county and the location, and Mr. Tavani used a very conservative rate and actually doubled PennDOT's background growth rate. However, my comment was, in the study, if Mr. Tavani could include a discussion on some of those other area developments, potential traffic they could add, just to confirm that his conservative estimate does cover some other area developments that may be coming online. Then comment five, again, back to that same crosswalk with the pedestrian lead interval, and Mr. Tavani touched on this as well. I recommend that they look into switching to a ladder-style crosswalk. It's higher visibility, it's sort of piano keys, if you want to picture that, as some people call it. If you go to the west on East Wynwood, when you get into Lower Marion, the next couple signalized intersections have that ladder-style crosswalk. So it's a little bit more consistent with the corridor as well, and it gives a little bit more visibility for vehicles, understanding that pedestrians may be entering the roadway there with that ladder-style crosswalk. And then finally, comment six was, you know, in the pedestrian and bicycle connections analysis, it talked about the intersection of East Wynwood and Woodside, if we went a little bit to the southeast. That gives access to the park across the street. There are ADA curb ramps on all corners of that intersection. There are not crosswalks to cross East Wynwood, and I believe that is a location for, you know, pedestrians to cross, based on residential on one side, a park on the other side. So I just have a comment that the treatment of that intersection, pedestrians at that intersection should be included in the highway occupancy permit discussions, that this development is spurred, since this development's accessing a state road. We do have PennDOT at the table, we do have Lower Marion Township at the table, and it's a good time to discuss that intersection, pet accommodations, and see if there's something that can be done. Maybe a broader discussion that goes a bit beyond this development, but, you know, while everyone's here, I think it's a good point to bring up and discuss a little bit further. So those were my six comments. I have not seen Mr. Tavani's response to those comments. I was trying to peek on my screen, because I saw there was a response letter. I couldn't see it too closely, but Todd, it's up to you, if you want, if Eric's back online, if you want him to go through his, or if you want Mr. Tavani to discuss the comments now, it's up to you.
I'd like to stick with this topic now that we're on it, and we'll turn back to Eric when we're finished with this topic. Mike, could you summarize actions or recommendations you would suggest that the applicant take to address the issues that you have identified?
Yeah. First would be to prohibit that left turn in from East Wynwood. So come in sort of southeast, yeah, that left turn movement. I'm of the opinion that I think that should be prohibited, just from a safety standpoint. Two, to look at any possibility of moving these accesses to the southeast. I'm guessing that's been looked at a bit. You know, this is the first we've, I've reviewed this study, but at least for my own edification, would like to hear as to why we can't get those things a little bit further south, so they're away from the queue. I think the pedestrian lead interval should be increased to get the pedestrians, get more pedestrians across, and reduce pedestrian-vehicle conflicts. And I think the crosswalk should be revised to be a higher-visibility crosswalk. I think the study should be revised to discuss other area developments and confirm the conservative estimate that Mr. Tavani has used in his study. And then I think there should be a discussion with both this applicant, PennDOT, and Lower Marion Township on the Woodside intersection pedestrian accommodation.
Do you have any recommendations about the design of East Wynwood Road and the number of lanes and cartway?
Not currently. I know there's been, you know, the right turn lane kind of causes a bit of an issue with these two access points, because they have to drift into it and cross it, and it's different from the through. It's been brought up, you know, do we need a right turn lane there? So I think it's an interesting question, and I don't know that Mr. Tavani is aware of that question, that it's been brought up somewhat recently, as far as an idea to some way, you know, reduce the road width, sort of a road diet through the area that would bring the accesses in and out of just a single lane or a double lane, one in each direction on East Wynwood. I know that there are a high percentage of right turns versus throughs as you come on this approach. However, together, those two volumes are not an overwhelming volume on this approach. I think Mr. Tavani can confirm, but I think this approach is more or less a B, a level service, with queues in the 300-foot range. So it's an interesting question to bring up with regard to this cross-section, from a traffic standpoint, as to whether or not a right turn lane is needed. You know, the thought of a road diet is to remove some pavement and prioritize pedestrians and bikes. I know there's been discussion of bike accommodation in this area. I think that's a broader discussion that has to occur with both Norberth Borough, Lower Marion Township, and PennDOT, is how you accommodate bikes through this area, and not just specifically along the frontage of this development, but a little bit wider out. You're going to have to zoom out a good bit to figure out the best way to accommodate bikes through this area. But as far as the section of East Wynwood, I think it's an interesting thing to look at, as far as whether or not there is an availability to reduce vehicle capacity to improve pedestrian bike capacity.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Tavani. Now, could you speak to your response?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. And Mike, that was a very good and thorough summary. I guess I would start off by saying I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Schneider said, but I would like to just interject a little bit of context, because that's always important in any application, with regard to his concern about the exiting vehicles making a right turn, having to look for gaps in either the right turn queue or the through queue, or just traffic in general. That is certainly true, and, you know, that's how unsignalized intersections operate, you look for gap acceptance. This is, you know, somewhat complicated by the fact that you have this auxiliary right turn lane along the site frontage. While maybe it's not common, it certainly isn't unique. If anyone's familiar with the Bryn Mawr Trust Bank, that's in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Lancaster Avenue and Ardmore, diagonally opposite the McDonald's that's there in Ardmore. There's a similar situation where you have an exit driveway that's along a right turn auxiliary lane, which probably has even greater activity than what's proposed here. But nevertheless, the context that's important here is this site generates, according to ITE, two trips over the course of a peak hour for exiting turns. So during the peak times of the day, there'll be one vehicle exiting every 30 minutes from that driveway. And the performance, I believe Mr. Schneider mentioned, is good on the westbound approach at the signal. The delays are short, it's level of service B with an average delay of 18 seconds or less. And again, that's during the worst times of day, that's during the peak hours. So what that means is there may be a vehicle every 30 minutes that has to wait up to approximately 18 seconds before it can proceed. So while I certainly can't disagree with anything that he said, I just think it's important for the commission to understand that this is something that will happen infrequently, it's for a short duration, and I think the average motorist will probably have no problem waiting for a queue, if present, in front of them, to simply start moving again before they proceed. So I'm not particularly worried about it. I know that these driveways have been looked at extensively by Mr. Jan over the last year plus, and I think this was the best balance that we could achieve of a number of different concerns, including site circulation of vehicles, delivery vehicles, trash vehicles. So I think they pretty much are where they are. His second comment regarding the inbound left turn, again, it's basically the same as the first response, you know, this is once again about frequency and context. I think that's even less frequent, might be one vehicle an hour making that turning movement, and, you know, it's looking for gaps in that same direction, that westbound direction, that has, you know, pretty short delay, and now we're even further away from the signal, so the effect of the occasional queue was even more muted than it would be for the exiting movement. Having said that, I don't believe the applicant has a problem with prohibiting inbound left turns and taking another look at channelizing that inbound driveway so that it is only entering right turns. You know, traffic is not destroyed or created, it's just rerouted. So if we get rid of the left turn in, that means that traffic will probably reassign itself to Williams Road or Clover Hill or Parkview Drive to basically get where they're going. But, you know, if it's one or two vehicles an hour, I don't think the average motorist or resident will even notice that. So I think we can certainly work through that issue. Regarding lengthening the pedestrian lead interval, Mike was right, it is five seconds. And just so everyone's aware of the nomenclature traffic engineers use, at a signal, you have a cycle. That's the entire duration of time from the start of red on a given approach until you get to start of red again. And then that cycle is broken up into phases. So you have like a side-street phase, a main-street phase, you might have a leading left turn phase, as we do here, and then phases are subdivided into intervals. And at this particular location, there is a five-second lead interval before the North Wynwood traffic starts moving, before the traffic starts coming out from under the bridge. There's a five-second period of time where not only is that traffic stopped, but all traffic at the intersection stopped. And this is a relatively new concept to increase pedestrian awareness and safety, and what it allows is pedestrians who have gathered on corners to enter the intersection sort of en masse during that all-red phase and establish themselves and already start crossing before cars even start moving. And what typically happens with pedestrians, or a little different than cars, is that, you know, you gather and wait on the corner before the ped head gives you a walk indication, and then once it goes to a walk, you start walking. So lengthening any pedestrian interval, including a pedestrian lead interval, will only serve the pedestrians that are late arriving, you know, who come to the intersection at the end of the interval. But usually, that's not how pedestrians are serviced. Usually, they're serviced at the beginning, and unlike cars that have to travel in single-file lines and travel lanes, pedestrians can all cross together, side by side. So I certainly understand the intent. I think having a five-second lead interval is already a very helpful safety measure, and, you know, we could look at lengthening it, but that just means that there's going to be more delay to the motorists. It will probably be incremental, it probably won't be noticeable, but I would just respectfully question whether or not it's really serving any purpose, because the pedestrians are already relatively infrequent at this location, and most of them are probably crossing at the beginning of the interval, not the end of the interval. So that would be my response to number three. Number four had to do with the proposed other developments. And Mr. Bressi, as you know, there's basically four heavy hitters that we know about, 114 Forest Avenue, 100 Forest Avenue, 203 Havreford, 650 Montgomery. I know we're already taking a lot of time, and if you want me to go into greater detail, I will, but the majority of these sites that I just mentioned are essentially redevelopment sites of existing properties that were either recently, or maybe not quite so recently, but certainly have a history of generating traffic in the borough. And what's being proposed to replace them are, in my opinion, comparable trip generators. So it's not necessarily going to be new added traffic to any location in the borough, including this traffic signal. So what I would like to do is work a little bit more closely with your staff and with Mr. Schneider, to see, you know, just how appropriate he and they believe would be my treatment of these other development trips, the trip distribution of them, and if we need to redo the analysis, we certainly will. As he correctly stated, I more than doubled the PennDOT background growth rate, which I think adds a significant level of conservativeness and maybe already addresses this, but I think that the best next step is for me to talk with him a little bit more. You know, adding a ladder-style crosswalk, piano, whatever you want to call it, that certainly does enhance, it certainly does potentially enhance motorist awareness of a pedestrian crossing facility. As we all know, the signalization took place within the last 10 years, and PennDOT, in its wisdom, thought that this would be an appropriate pedestrian treatment, this type of crosswalk. I understand his comment about consistency along the corridor. The only thing I would respectfully point out is, we are really not generating that many additional pedestrian trips, and even though this might sound like this is a relatively simple item, you know, it technically does require the review and approval of PennDOT, updating signal permit plans to reflect existing conditions. It does have a component of time, as well as the actual cost of the improvement itself. And, you know, I would point out that irrespective of this application, the pedestrian enhancement that's being contemplated is something that could be done, you know, having nothing to do with the application. So I think we're certainly willing to talk about that a little more. Maybe the borough could take the lead on the design, and there could be some way that we participate in that. But that's essentially what I've thought about that. And then with regard to number six, yeah, you know, I think he's totally right, you know, he mentioned, Mr. Schneider mentioned that this is probably more of a long-term plan, this is a significant improvement, you know, looking at a road diet, looking at providing a bicycle facility that doesn't exist. It would be rather thoughtless to include it just along the frontage of this site. It should probably be a complete experience from Route 1 to Route 30. And, you know, it might be appropriate to start the conversation, as Mr. Schneider put it, but in terms of, you know, what the real next steps are, you know, that might be something that occurs a little bit later. But we're certainly willing to talk about that. And, you know, we recognize that Shortridge Park is a potential pedestrian attractor, and it is today irrespective of this application. If there was going to be a mid-block ped crossing, depending on how that ped crossing is treated, it may require PennDOT approval, and with the signals, you know, relatively nearby, I don't know, that would be a slam dunk, but as he says, you know, this would be a good time to start discussing this at the HOP stage, and, you know, I completely agree with that. So I think that's comments one through six.
I'd like to just stick with this topic for a minute. I'd like to ask if any planning commissioners have any questions or comments about this topic? commissioners have any questions or comments about this topic you'd like to make. Can you go first, Jim?
Sure.
Jim, could you just say your name? Because Mr. Fromholz said he's having trouble discerning who the planning commissioner is.
That's right. And I won't appear on the camera, I think. So this is Jim Spear. I'm a planning commission member. So I have, I concur with the crosswalk with making that a longer signal time for pedestrians. I think if we increase that to 10 seconds or more, I think that would give people the chance to cross, to make a complete crossing. Traffic will really only be inconvenienced there if someone presses the button. And someone will only press the button if someone is waiting there to cross. So the five-second hit start is appreciated. I remember what it was like before the five-second hit start. But once people have entered the crosswalk, they will want to finish. And traffic is going to have to stop for them anyway. So they might as well stop for a full, a full period of time that allows a full crossing. That's would be my.
If I could just interject very quickly, I probably did a bad job of explaining that. We're just talking about the all-red interval where all traffic is stopped. What typically happens with a pedestrian crossing is the pedestrians cross with the parallel side street movement. So you still have a man signal, you know, you still have an indication that it's safe to cross. And any left-turning traffic has to yield to the pedestrians already established in the crosswalk. So there's actually 22 seconds of pedestrian crossing time that's allocated if the pedestrian button is pressed. It's not just five. It's a guaranteed 22 seconds, five of which all traffic is completely stopped with an all-red indication on all signal hits. And that's specifically what Mr. Schneider was talking about, possibly making marginally longer. I don't know if he intended to double the length and then go from 22 seconds overall to 27 seconds with a 10-second all-red interval. That would definitely affect levels of service for everybody. So I just want to make sure that I made that clear.
I think, Jim, it's okay, since it's 8:30. I mean, we've registered that there's an interest in, and that is not, we're not here to design the intersection. So, but I think it's important to note that point.
Okay.
Are there any other comments on any other aspect of this? Pardon me? I know we have to talk about stormwater and we have to talk about some zoning issues. So I don't want to dig a whole lot into this intersection. But I think it's important to note that there's an opportunity to look at that and potentially improving pedestrian perceptions of safety or safety without, potentially without a lot of cost to traffic function. Are there other comments on this topic of circulation? Adam, did you want to raise any questions at this point?
Mostly, I just want to concur with the traffic engineer's report.
I'm sorry. Would you mind introducing yourself? Because the applicant can't always tell which planning commissioner is speaking.
I'm Adam Crom, with the blue mask on and the maroon shirt. So I just want to concur and that I agree with the assessment from the Mr. Schneider for the borough for the traffic effects. And that the best way forward, in my opinion, would be to have some continued work on the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure plan for the site, you know, as it relates to Wynwood Road to address these six points, including the turn lane, the left turn access, the crosswalks, and so on. Thank you.
Adam, I have a question for you. Notwithstanding what might be requested of the applicant as a reasonable condition of approval of the development, are there other aspects of the construction or the development of this site that might afford an opportunity to make broader improvements that the borough, the township, might want to participate in?
Yeah. So I mean, I am a resident of Elmwood Avenue, and so I walk on this particular block face pretty often. I was just there yesterday evening. And I cycle also on this route because it does connect the shopping center, which has, for example, the frozen yogurt shop and, you know, Shortridge Park and so on. The, you know, the observation that I have is essentially that the sidewalk is juxtaposed with a high-speed roadway. Traffic is moving at 35 to 40 miles an hour when the signals are green. And it's a curve. So they're coming around the curve from the west with actually limited visibility. The opportunity, I think, is to improve the safety for pedestrians to cross the road and to travel along it. Because as a resident of the neighborhood, I can tell you, we have seen several cars actually crash on Wynwood Road. I'm not sure the data, you know, points to huge hazards, but it's kind of alarming when vehicles leave the cartway and crash into trees and houses along the side. Because I think it indicates people are traveling too fast and that they're distracted. So the opportunity, I think, exists to take what is now a 40-foot to 50-foot cross section at Wynwood Road that was really designed for four to five lanes, which is really over, too much pavement really for the amount of traffic, and to reduce the pavement that's dedicated to the vehicular movement and increase the space that's available for pedestrians and bicycles in the same corridor, and simultaneously to make improvements that will get the target engineered speed for the cartway down to about 25 miles an hour, which will be a consistent speed limit with Wynwood Road, East Wynwood Road immediately on the next block face, or the two block faces down with the shopping center. So by doing those things, we will improve the pedestrian environment along the Wynwood Road for people walking. We may have the opportunity to introduce bicycle infrastructure, again, as part of a corridor strategy with additional properties beyond just this one. And we will improve the safety by bringing the speed down. And to the borough engineers' comment about number six for Woodside Avenue and striping crosswalks, again, the key barrier there is traffic moving at 35 to 40 miles an hour is not yielding to pedestrians. And, you know, children crossing and whatnot are at some risk. And so if we get the speed down to 25 miles an hour on Wynwood Road, we may be able to make that improvement eventually at Woodside. So through the highway occupancy permit process, there may be an opportunity to address these issues.
And that's what I'd like to zero in on. Because I understand it is not the applicant's responsibility to rebuild this whole road from City Avenue to Extra Avenue. But this may be a way to instigate a long-needed look at this corridor more comprehensively. And so how does, I'm wondering, Mike, can you tell me, how does this connect to the highway occupancy permit? Is what, does that provide some sort of opportunity to precipitate a more comprehensive look at this corridor?
I think what I mentioned before is what the highway occupancy permit does is it brings all three entities to the table, public entities, the borough, Lower Marion Township, and PennDOT. So while we're all sort of discussing these, and this is not a, what I call, large project, a development project. So I don't know if there'll be, you know, bigger in-person meetings, like we'd see if there was a large shopping center going in. But while all three entities are engaged looking at the same development along this corridor, it's an opportunity to start the discussion and then carry that discussion further afterwards. It usually works best when both municipalities get engaged, and then they can sort of get their heads around some needs that both municipalities have for the area. Then maybe engage PennDOT a little bit further to look to see if PennDOT has any plans for this area, and maybe work towards, you know, some sort of comprehensive design that expands outside of the study area of this site, obviously, and into both, further into the borough and to Lower Marion Township. And, you know, there are great opportunities that could be looked at. There's some planning to be done. There's planning that has been done. So really, what the highway, what the permit does here, Todd, is it gets everyone to the table to start those discussions.
Is Narborough at the table now in this permit review? Or is it not because this is in Lower Marion?
Yeah, we've commented, since the development is in, a good portion of it's in Narborough Borough, PennDOT, through the HOP process, typically wants the applicant to provide any comments they've received from a municipal review through the land development process. So we can also provide my comment letter to the department to make sure they have it as they go through their HOP review. Lower Marion has our review letter. And I think we will be at the table because PennDOT likes to see what land development comments are coming out of the municipal reviews. So we've also requested that through that highway occupancy permit process, that the borough be included in any correspondence and meetings. We had that. I believe that's in Eric's letter. He can comment towards that. So we've already requested a seat at that table. And in my experience, PennDOT's been pretty good at including the impact municipalities, my project is into them for review.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to ask, because this is beyond the scope of this approval, but it's an important matter of public concern, and it keeps coming up at these meetings, I would like to ask the commission members if you would be, if you would feel that it would be an appropriate resolution of this topic tonight to ask borough council, and ask the borough manager, and ask our traffic consultant to begin conversations with Lower Marion Township about a joint approach to evaluating this corridor. And perhaps in a timely way, that would allow us to identify any potential improvements that could occur concurrently with the construction of this project. Because I don't know that we can sort these things out in the context of this development review, but I also don't want to ignore it because it's not part of the development review. Would that be an acceptable outcome? I'm seeing Jake hands. Okay, so we will, Adam, would that be an appropriate course of action, you think? Okay, so we will, borough manager's here. So you've heard it earlier, but we'll communicate that to the staff and the council with as much urgency as we can. I appreciate the applicant's forbearance while we discuss this, but I don't want to ignore the issue. So aside from the improvements to East Wynwood Road, which are kind of beyond the scope of this development review, are there any other questions about the, either onsite circulation or access or egress to this site that you'd like to ask? Eric, I know you're connected now. This would be an appropriate time to raise any questions you had about the circulation in the parking lot, in the rear, particularly the waste removal circulation. Did you want to make any comments about that?
Sure. I apologize. My computer decided it needed to restart itself with absolutely no warning, just as I was in the middle of talking. So, yeah, so as part of the application that we had reviewed, the applicant had provided some turning template diagrams showing vehicle, trash truck, pedestrian vehicle circulating through the parking lot. And we'd identified that there were some pinch points that were seeming tight, or that we would have vehicles potentially conflicting with parked vehicles or other structures on the site. I was just looking briefly through the revised turning templates. It looks like the applicant has worked towards a resolution of that. We would continue to review that when it's formally submitted to the borough. But generally, the observation was that circulations, while you may be able to get the vehicles through the parking lot, seemed very tight. And you can still, you're coming in close contact with vehicles, particularly with the trash truck, or trying to access some of the garages. So that was my comment. You know, Chris may have looked into a little bit more since then.
Okay. Chris, do you have any response? Would you like to respond to Eric's comment?
Yeah, I mean, sure. So Eric's right. It is tight. And I guess with sites like this, it's really a game of, you know, do we want more paving so that there is more flexibility for a trash truck that comes, you know, twice a week? Or do we want to, you know, reduce the paving more for the environment, you know, and just a reduction in pavement and impervious surface over time? And so, you know, to me, this was a project where we were trying to keep the paving as small as we could. And I guess I'd just note that any of the maneuverability diagrams are done with a perfect rectangle of a vehicle. And really, you know, none of the vehicles I'm aware of on the road are like that. They all have kind of rounded edges. And we were trying to show it with just one movement, that if someone felt uncomfortable with the one, you know, back up and then go, then they could go forward an extra time, back up one more, and give a little more leeway. In terms of, you know, the parked cars, again, it's, we're trying to stay away from the perfect nine-foot wide by 18-foot deep space. And any cars that are smaller than that are not in there, then provide additional room. So Eric's correct that it's tight. In this case, you know, I think that it's more appropriate to keep it tight. Again, it is six units. It's a residential development that we're trying to keep on a residential scale.
And I will point out, any of the tight movements were not impacting vehicles entering or exiting the site. This had to do with internal circulation. So it really is only going to be impacting, or the people who are living or accessing the site. It's not going to impact, you know, access along the frontage and the public areas.
Okay. So before we move off this topic, I just want to ask Mike and Frank, in terms of follow-up to the comments that Mike provided and were subsequently provided, is it reasonable to say that our traffic engineering consultant and the applicant's traffic engineering consultant should meet to discuss the background growth rate and the potential surrounding development to impact this? I think you expressed a desire to have a conversation about that, that you might further also discuss to help Mr. Schneider understand the options for, or lack thereof, for relocating the driveways further away from the traffic signal, and also the potential usefulness of evaluating whether or not this area would function better with the consolidation of the right turn lane and the through traffic lane on East Wynwood Road. Would there be safety improvements there and improvements for bicycles and pedestrians that could be achieved? Those were, I think, some of the outstanding questions we couldn't answer tonight. Would it be fair to ask you both to go back and consult with each other about those topics? Is that a fair outcome of this?
If I could just add my thought as well, Mr. Bressi, and then I don't know, might PennDOT be an important part of that discussion?
Well, of course. Yeah, I agree with you. And I assume our traffic experts would bring in Lower Marion's experts and PennDOT as necessary. Yeah. I think the language we see potentially is, if it turned out that there was some solution that involved reconfiguring that right turn lane for safety improvements or enhancements, that might be something that's accomplished during the construction phase of your project, since you'll be constructing in that area anyway. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to miss, we wouldn't want to not have the knowledge about that at this point, in case it became something that was worth discussing further down the road. So it's right now just an inquiry to see whether it's an idea that makes sense in regard to that issue. And then I guess the others too would involve Lower Marion and PennDOT. But I don't think we can resolve those tonight, but I think it's something we'd appreciate a little further discussion about between us, you, the township, and PennDOT. If that's acceptable.
I think that's a good plan, Todd, as far as Frank and I discussing further. And Fred has a great point. Frank and I can discuss it till we're blue in the face and come up with a great plan. But ultimately, it's PennDOT's road and that right turn lane's in Lower Marion Township. So, you know, we can have our initial discussions about, to walk through my comments. And that could be Frank and I. And then anything further from that, we can try to include the other entities that have a lot of say in what happens along that roadway.
I think we appreciate that. And I see people in the room shaking their heads. Yes. That would be, that would be most appreciated. Let's move on. Eric, you were beginning to talk about stormwater issues, I think, when we lost you. That is another big issue. I'd like you to continue with those comments. We also have Tom Clark from the Lower Marion Conservancy in the meeting. And the Lower Marion Conservancy was one of the parties that we had asked the applicant to consult with. And that consultation did occur, which we appreciate. And so after you, Eric, I will ask Tom to offer his comments on this plan as well. So Eric, would you like to continue, please?
Yes. Okay. So as part of this preliminary plan, the applicant had submitted what would be their preliminary stormwater management design, including their calculations. You know, the design will continue to evolve as we go through preliminary and into the final plan. But the basis of where we are is the stormwater regulation comprises of three items. It's infiltration, it's rate control, and it's water quality. So for what they are proposing, it's the rain garden and the various plantings on the property. They are demonstrating They are demonstrating that they will be compliant with the rate control, which is essentially reducing how fast the water flows across the site from the existing condition to the proposed. So water cannot leave the site any faster than it currently does, and they have to slow it down. As far as water quality, by use of the rain garden, it's collecting pollutants and different items out of the water and filtering it out and capturing it before it's released towards the stream. And the last item is infiltration. So as Mr. Yon had gone through, you do testing on the site, and sometimes you just find soils that cannot accommodate infiltration, be it a limiting zone, the type of soil, stone, the presence of groundwater. And in that, we evaluated their, the borings and the assessment that they had completed, and we concur that the soils are just not going to accept groundwater. And there is a provision in the code for the situation. This is not an unforeseen situation, given this proximity, this portion of the borough, the higher groundwater table with the presence of the creek. So there really is no other way around that. Now, I will point out, a lot of the buffer plantings that they're installing are going to, even beyond the stormwater system, would help reduce pollutants and help further reduce the rate. And then basically with that, the rest of my review comments were very technical in nature, and we'll continue to work them out as we go through a review of their stormwater reports.
Tom, would you like to comment, offer your comments on the plan as you've reviewed it?
Sure, yeah. Thank you for giving the opportunity. Yeah, so in looking through the plan, you know, we certainly, you know, appreciate the no-mo zones that have been added and the riparian plantings. But, you know, big things that, just in looking through it, that we'd still ask for or hope to see, or at least, you know, recommend, have to do with the stone wall channelization. So I know in the plans, there's plans to fix up the channel, you know, repair the channel, and to, you know, in the future, remove woody debris and remove the sediment islands that form. And we feel this will speed up the stream and, you know, prevent any, you know, limit the spillover and increase impacts on downstream sites. So we would ask, rather than repairing the stone wall, to remove it and recommend removing it, regrading the floodplain so water can spill out. And then, you know, having these riparian plantings. Also, you know, see that there's that large lawn area in the northern section of the riparian area? And, you know, since this site is so sensitive as is, I mean, I think that could be beneficial for the site and for the stream farther down to treat that as the other area, where it's more of a mowed path through no-mo areas and featuring more large trees, rather than putting that lawn in an area that's so wet regularly. And, yeah, and just, and overall, just bring it together, kind of, you know, treating the, making sure that the stream area and this riparian area is treated as a dynamic system that can move and function, rather than kind of keeping up old practices of, you know, channelizing and beating up the stream. Thank you.
I have a question, and I'll ask my fellow commissioners if they have questions. Eric, because of the difficulties in groundwater recharge, you are noting that an app, that a weaver must be required, and that that seems not unusual to have to consider that, given that it's common to find soils that won't absorb water, et cetera. My question is, though, given that finding about the soils, how can you persuade the public that is concerned about downstream stormwater volumes, that building on a site where the water won't recharge and handling it through a rain garden, that it's not allowing the water to absorb into the ground, but just holding it and then it will drain out, I guess? I mean, how does, how can, how can the public be assured that this is not going to make downstream water flows worse, if the water can't absorb?
Right. So the main component of stormwater regulation that would be applicable to downstream, let's say downstream flooding, which is the instantaneous, you know, gathering of stormwater, running off surfaces, collecting in the stream and flowing down. So that's regulated by the rate control requirement. And the way the code is written is that any stormwater that's flowing off of the site, the rate of which it's leaving, must actually be reduced during, by the use of the stormwater system, from the existing condition. So right now, when it rains, you know, what would be considered, what is a, you know, a two-year storm, that, which is a certain intensity of stormwater, that's going to flow off the site as it is now. When this development goes in, including all the new impervious surface, that stormwater system has to regulate and control that water and hold it back and slowly release it so that the water flows off at an even slower rate than it would be, you know, with that, before the development. So the infiltration, the intention of the infiltration requirement is to recharge groundwater. In this case, if the water can't receive infiltration, you know, you don't have the ability to recharge that groundwater that's already, you know, surcharged. So the rate control regulation is what is going to, you know, provide protection of the downstream properties with regard to stormwater downstream.
When you say off the site, does that mean, you know, flowing off the south end of the site under Elmwood Avenue? Is that what off the site means?
Off-site would be, right, so water flows downhill. In this case, the stormwater, as the site exists now, water is flowing, you know, towards the stream, essentially from each direction, just by the natural drainage and collecting at the creek, similar to anywhere else in the borough. Ultimately, almost the entire borough is draining towards the creek. So yes, off-site would be collecting toward a channel and coming down under Elmwood.
And now that there's a rain garden, there is not, you know, many of these developments we see, we see some kind of underground basin that captures water, stores it, and releases it slowly, either infiltrates into the ground or is released slowly over time somehow. Now, that is not part of this proposal, is a rain garden instead?
The rain garden is effectively meeting the same, is doing the same function. So you can have an underground basin, and actually, we've had a previous development for various reasons they weren't able to infiltrate. They use an underground system that collected the water, held it, slowly released it. The rain garden's going to do the same thing. It's going to collect the water, hold it, slowly release it as, you know, after the storm passes. So this just does it on a surface treatment, as opposed to an underground storage tank treatment.
Okay. Are there any questions from any planning commissioners about the stormwater management component of this project? Go ahead, Jim.
Sure, this is Jim Spear. Is that, rain garden, does that have a capacity comparable to a similar underground system?
Right. So the, yes, so the rain garden is, and would, and its final design be sized to capture and hold that amount of water that's going to allow them to meet that rate reduction? So, you know, an underground storage tank does it on a smaller footprint, that's deeper, it's holding the water. The rain garden does it on a wider area at a shallower depth. But the capacity, right.
So what we're looking at here, it has an actual estimated capacity or some kind of rating that's sufficient?
Correct. Yes. So the area, the rain garden has a capacity that's calculated and is part of their stormwater calculations.
So what would the depth be during one of these torrential downpours that we're getting fairly regularly now?
I'd have to look. And Chris, do you have a quicker answer on what your depths are for the basin?
I'm looking.
I believe your revised plan might have had the new outlet. So the basin collects the water, and then there's an outlet control structure that is going to regulate, you know, the depth of water and the rate at which water is leaving the basin.
We have, the bottom of the rain garden is at elevation 246, and the spillway, which includes one foot of freeboard above it, I mean, and so the bottom is at 246. The, it's designed for the 100-year storm, and then we have to provide another one foot of freeboard above that, basically for an emergency if something was clogging. That spillway goes up to 253.7.
240.
Or no, you know what? I'm sorry, the bottom is 249. So it's four and a half feet from the bottom of the rain garden to the spillway.
I guess my concern is, does this become an attractive nuisance? It's essentially, I mean, every property owner with a swimming pool needs to put a fence around it. You know, here we can have standing water, and a small child coming by, doesn't seem like it's a great combination.
No, it's, so it's not designed to hold water for, you know, long periods of time. It's designed, in fact, the code requires that it drains within 24 hours, I believe. So, you know, it holds the water back during the storm and then lets it out slowly, but within 24 hours, it's dissipated. And so it's not like a swimming pool that would hold water for a long time.
Long enough, okay.
Other questions?
And also, one other question, excuse me. What about mosquitoes and, you know, insects around standing water? Is this going to become a problem in that area too?
Right. So, okay, Chris.
I don't believe so. I know that was kind of an original concern when, you know, the idea of rain gardens first came out. But, you know, basically, the design of not allowing the water to sit there is how the mosquitoes, you know, mosquitoes breed when there's small amounts of standing water for a long time. So part of that draining within 24 hours is what won't allow that. What I'll also add is the bottom of the rain garden will be 18 to 24 inches of amended soil, which is soil that, you know, has some sand in it, some organics, and, you know, drains fairly quickly. And below that, we have an underdrain. And so, you know, as the water gets down and is filtered through the soil, there's then an underdrain to take it away. And so, again, it's not intended to hold water for long periods of time, which is when the mosquito concern is, is an issue.
Thank you. Quick question then. I think Jim is next, and then Adam. So introduce yourself to the group, because the applicants can't tell who we are.
Hi, this is Jen Gaiske Hian, and I am a planning commission member. And I just wanted to sort of inquire your process, because if you've done soil testing or not, I don't know. But there is potential, I would imagine, to add to the clay composition of that soil where the grade sort of isn't as steep. It, you know, it's steep and then it sort of gets less in slope, if that's probably not the right way to say it, but anyway. So I was just wondering about that in terms of adding to the clay composition. I guess I have in mind the, you know, there's bentonite or bentogrew, which can be injected into the soil to increase absorption.
So I guess, maybe Eric, I'll take that first. You help me out if you think I need to add anything. There were infiltration tests done in two locations, and then two additional test holes done, so four total throughout the site to really verify the soil throughout the site and the soil profile and limiting zones. You're right, there are ways to amend soils to improve their capacity. The problem is, you know, if it was a localized area, and let's say you had the first one foot of soil was clay, and below that was sand, and you could replace that clay with sand or amended soils to allow it to get through to that next stratum, you know, then that's helpful. If the soils are poor throughout the whole soil profile until it gets down to the water table, then you're not really increasing any capacity, you're just allowing it to get to the water table faster. So I don't believe that's a, that's really a viable option here.
It's my understanding, this is Burn Panzak, the landscape architect, that bentonite as a material is a product that creates less infiltration. It's used to line basins or ponds where you don't want infiltration.
I would maybe just add that I think as part of the soil borings that we did review, as you were saying, there's limited soil, but it's also the presence of the water table at a shallow depth. And that effectively, the bottom of the rain garden does, you know, represent a soil modification. The soil they're putting in is designed for rain gardens to support the plants, but also to provide absorption of the water. And this rain garden concept is a item in, is a stormwater management, best management practice that's outlined in the state's BMP manual, you know, for use as a stormwater feature.
Adam, you had a question?
Yeah, just, well, a comment before my question, just that if I heard correctly, Tom Clark was making the comment that it might be preferable to not have the stream in a hardened channel, and have it, you know, potentially have some work done to the bed and to the banks, and to even include, you know, some floodplain area to hold water. But my question, I guess, is also with rain garden, just isn't enforceable to maintain it in an engineered environment like that over decades? How does it work with maintenance 20 years from now, when the drains might need to be reconstructed, for example?
So as part of any new stormwater feature that's installed in the borough, you know, in this case, as part of a land development, there's an operation and maintenance agreement that the landowner has to enter into with the borough, and they also have to post an escrow fund that ensures or allows for inspection of these facilities on an ongoing basis over, of course, I think the initial funding is over a 10-year period. So there is a legal protection that the borough has for these, you know, stormwater features that are being installed with new developments.
Thank you. Other questions from planning commissioners? Eric, you've probably, or Chris, you've probably gone over this once already, but I just, as a layperson, I understand the concept you're talking about, but I have a hard time understanding quantitatively, and I have no concerns about the rain garden as a practice, but I have concerns quantitatively about whether this rain garden will actually slow the overall flow of water into the stream area. It seems hard for me to believe that it's big enough. So I'm wondering, can either of you explain to me how the, I mean, without going into the algebra or words of it, how that calculation works and why it works?
I'll try to start with that. So I guess, couple, there's two main methods you would use to design a stormwater system. One is the rational method, and the other is SDS. The SDS method is, you know, what is typically required, or it is required in Lower Merion Township. I believe in Narberth, you can use either one, depending on a site. The SDS typically results in larger volume. The SDS typically results in larger volume requirements. And so, in this case, we use the SDS, and so, I know from, you know, looking at other projects that, or comparison to a project that I could use the rational method, that this rain garden has more volume. I will also say that in the tentative sketch phase of the project, the Lower Marion Township engineer required that we consider the soils of the site as B soils. And so, typical soil classifications for the hydraulic classifications are A soils, B, C, or D. And so, A are really the best soils that are, you know, drain very well. B is kind of next, and somewhat typical in this area. But then, C soils are getting to be poorer, and D soils are typically what you'd find near a creek. Uh, and as you go through that, the different soil classifications, the closer you get to the D soils, the more runoff there is. And so, in this case, there's an added conservatism of the design that we are, that when we run the calculations based, you know, on the impervious, and we have to reduce it back to an existing conditions that were considered B soils, which to me, these soils, as poor as they are, are not really B soils. There's an added level of, you know, conservatism there. So, I guess for lots, for, for those reasons, I feel this rain garden is going to work very well and be somewhat overdesigned in comparison to, to others that I have designed in other municipalities, or even in, in Narberth or Lower Marion themselves.
And the only thing I would add, just maybe to elaborate on, on the modeling, so the way that the stormwater calculation is done, it, it's a combination of the amount of rainfall that falls in a given storm, you know, and that's based off of the current codes, based directly off of the National, NOAA National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration rain tables. It looks at how fast, how short duration of a time the rain is going to fall, and then it compares what the, the anticipated amount of runoff from a site is going to be, and its existing pre-development condition, and its post-development condition. And then that's where you get your volumes, and then that's where you get the size of your stormwater basins. You know, it's a pretty standardized calculation systems that are used. So, and then they're designed by Chris, and then vetted, you know, by the various professionals on both sides of municipal boundary.
Any other questions?
I have just one comment.
Heidi.
This is Heidi, voice on the planning commission. I was wondering, I'm wondering if there's any way to introduce more larger shade trees that could be over the parking area? That's a lot of asphalt that's not shaded, just a comment. There are three evergreens to the south, on the south side of that slope, could they attack the larger trees, for example?
Well, this is Bern Panzak, just to address that. This is the, the north side of the, of the parking lot. So, putting shade trees in here would not enhance shade on the parking lot. We avoided this area just because there would be a, a larger trash truck going in and out of this area. There will be shade generated by the, the structures themselves. You know, I, I think we, we could put a couple of, a shade tree in here that will have some effect as it grows over this, this edge. You know, we're constrained a little bit by grades and walls and, and other areas. So, yeah, I think, you know, an additional shade tree in this area would, would work.
How about on the south side? By Lot Two?
Like here?
Yeah, where the three evergreens are?
Oh, here? Uh, yeah, I think so. You know, the evergreens were planned as a, as kind of a, a mix of, of, uh, landscape materials within the, the context of the overall planting. There's a, a wall here that they would be screening to some degree. But, uh, yeah, I think we could do that, add another shade tree in here.
Are there comments yet from the shade tree commission on this landscape design?
Uh, we've been to the stack, and there have been comments, and, uh, you know, I think in my presentation, I mentioned the, the idea of adding, this is the Narberth shade tree. We, we did add these additional four street trees along Elmwood Avenue, and we did continue to add more native species in, in areas. The other aspect that I didn't bring up, which was a minor issue, I think, but what, one that was a little dear to the stack was, sorry, um, there are two, two trees over in this area on either side of the, the Narberth Borough sign. They asked us to consider transplanting those or possibly utilizing them in our design, and we've located them, and on the set of plans that have been recently submitted on Friday, we, we did add a notation that we would further study those, those two trees. And then, you know, also, as mentioned, the Lower Marion Stack had requested that we increase the diversity of these six trees in front of the, the actual units, and we, we did do that by adding a three of one variety and three of another variety there.
Thank you. What are, Mr. Clark made two general comments. One is that the Lower Marion Conservancy would urge you to consider not repairing the wall, but using the, the degrading of the wall as an opportunity to start allowing the stream to flow a little more naturally through this site. And he also recommended that less, there'd be less mown lawn area and more meadow area in the floodplain area. What are your responses to those comments?
Well, you know, again, we, we had our riparian corridor specialists review the, this corridor, and the finding was is that the walls were in fairly good shape, and that, you know, there really wasn't a, an, an intense need for rehabilitation or rebuilding of these walls, just some, some maintenance. And, uh, you know, really, it was a decision that we stick with the current condition. You know, we also note that, you know, even if these walls were removed, that, you know, there's a, you know, a section very closely across or through the Elmwood Avenue right-of-way and further on down that returns to this channelized condition, which we have no control over and would, would persist throughout the future. You know, and as far as the no-mow zones were concerned, we, we feel like we've improved this, uh, this riparian corridor pretty significantly with the improvements that are shown on the plan, and we've even gone beyond really what has been required. And, you know, we felt like there, there should be a balance between some use and, and access to this natural feature for the residents, you know, within this development. And, uh, you know, we, we looked at a, a very, what we thought was a relatively modest amount of turf there as a backyard kind of option for the residents.
Do you know how usable that area is when it gets wet? Is that a dry area, or does that get kind of mucky and swampy when, when it rains?
Honestly, I haven't been there in, in, you know, the drier periods, but I, I actually don't know the answer to your question.
When, when the, you know, we do appreciate the, the landscaping, however, I would, I would hazard that many of the benefits of the riparian landscaping that you are proposing, perhaps aside from the trees, are lost because you have those walls. And you're not, you're not really creating that kind of stream ecosystem that really benefits in the riparian plantings. The Lower Marion Township has made significant investments downstream. Lower Marion Conservancy, National Fish and Wildlife Federation, and Narberth Park have made investments upstream to try to begin to return these environments to closer to their natural functioning. And here, really, I don't, I don't think we are, we're, we're getting as close to that as, that, you know, in a way that kind of reflects the thinking and investment that have been, been made elsewhere. So, what I'm wondering, is there room for further consideration of this? I know the Lower Marion Conservancy has identified funding sources that can help defray the cost of more extensive improvements in this corridor. You know, I, I think since there's construction going on, since there's engineering going on, and, and, and re-landscaping, it really behooves us to think harder about this. Would you be willing to consider thinking further about, about how this corridor is managed?
Well, I think just from myself, I, we, we've, we've really thought a lot about this, and, uh, you know, the, the, the time that we spent on site and, and the professionals that we had looking at this, you know, there was a feeling that this, this corridor was stable, and that, uh, you know, the, the methodology that we've suggested here was an enhancement to that, and we felt like it was a good one, and, uh, you know, at this time, you know, we've considered it significantly. There's been a lot of discussion with our team, and, uh, you know, at the, at this time, it's, it's our, our plan to move forward with what you see on the, on the plan.
Okay, are you still open to having a, I believe in the conditions, to have a third, at the tentative plan of the, the condition to, to having a, a third party be involved with the, with the maintenance, or, I forget what the condition was, but a third party be involved with, with the management of the quarter going forward? Does anyone remember? Tom, are you still on the call, Tom? Do you remember what that condition was? Do you guys remember what that condition was by any chance? No?
I don't have a mind.
All right, well, we'll, we'll try and look that up. So, let me try and.
I can look it up.
Okay. I don't have any other questions about the water management or landscaping. Does anyone else have any questions about that? Okay. So, the last series of topics, I think, and then we'll open it up to other topics, have to do with a few saldo and zoning issues that were flagged in the letters, and a couple others that we'd like to ask about. I think one of the key issues, really, which our zoning officer engineer and nobody really noted the first time around, is that Lot, um, that's the lot number, right? Lot Two is not compliant, they say, with the provision in our saldo that outlines the, the dimensions, the street frontage dimensions of the corner lot. In fact, I didn't, Mike, I didn't ask you to make comments. Would you like to make a comment about that and, and the zoning and saldo issues you saw?
Yes.
And introduce yourself so everyone knows.
Yeah, sure. I'm Mike Narquish from Montgomery County Planning Commission. And yes, that is a comment in our letter, like you mentioned, Todd, and under subdivision and land development ordinance comments. Corner lots, 450, 21D, states that corner lots will have a minimum lot width of the width required for the applicable zoning districts, so.
Plus the front yard dimension.
Yes, plus the front yard dimension along all roads, and it seems like on Elmwood, it, it does not do that for Lot Two. We have some other saldo comments. A couple are just sort of like missing information, you know, where the, where the adjacent zoning districts are and so forth. And I noted that on the submission that MCPC got more recently for the, the SOPI submission, I think it's called, SOPI, the zoning districts are identified, but not, but they're labeled, and there's no zoning boundaries identified. So, you still can't really tell where the Narberth adjacent districts are. It looks like cartway width has now been provided on those plans, but again, it's what was submitted to Lower Marion, so I'm not sure if and when that will be submitted to Narberth. For vehicular circulation with the driveway location, I think a lot of these comments were raised already by, by your traffic engineer, and we suggested coordinating with PennDOT and Lower Marion regarding the placement of the proposed driveway, and whether any additional, additional access controls may be necessary. And of course, your, your traffic engineer talked about perhaps prohibiting left turns in. With the dumpster pad location and truck maneuverability, many of our comments, looking back over our past review letters, have touched on this issue with, for different aspects. And one of them is certainly the access, which has been discussed already, and it seems like it is not only tight vehicular circulation, but when you look at the circulation plans that were submitted, the, the lines seem to be cutting across existing parking lots, parking spaces, that is. So, I, it's, it's concerning. Also, this is just, the area seems generally unpleasant. It's long, it's set back, it's enclosed, and with the dumpster at the end. And granted, there is a balancing act between how much impervious coverage you have and how far you set back your, your dumpster to have more, more, better circulation, and perhaps maybe even more space for a pedestrian to get back there and walk back there with, with a little bit more open space, so we understand that. With pedestrian circulation, we commend the applicant for the improvements along the streetscape, but it looks like there's a disconnect between the proposed sidewalk and the verge, and we love the fact that they're adding the verge, but it doesn't meet the existing sidewalk evenly. It's, it's, it's offset, so we just recommend that that be tapered in smoothly to the existing sidewalk. With landscape design, there is a proposed solid vinyl fence around the dumpster, and we noted that screen buffers may consist of one of four options. The screen buffer option with a fence requires ornamental trees and shrubs. So, that, and I, I go on to mention the specs for that. Parking, this was an item that we brought up in a previous review letter. We just feel that there is perhaps too much of this, too mu, too much parking. So, if you're talking about perhaps considering maybe making more room for circulation and adding impervious, maybe you could save room by cutting back on the parking. The amount of parking proposed exceeds both Lower Marion and the Narberth parking ratios. I guess what is proposed would be three spaces per dwelling unit. Lower Marion requires two, and Narberth requires one. And that is the extent of my comments.
Okay. So, let's, um, let's go back to the, the corner lot issue, because Eric, you raised that as well. Chris, or anyone on your team, what's your response to the flagging of that issue of compliance with the subdivision code? Is that something you were able to address?
Yes, I added a dimension to the plan on the plans that we submitted to Lower Marion on Friday, and, you know, copied Narberth virtually, or electronically. Bern, could I, could I share my screen? You could start sharing yours.
That pop, do you have the ability, the permission to do that?
Yes, I just needed Bern to. Yes, I just needed Bern to stop. And so I know this is a little hard to see here with the tree behind it, but there's a 47.8-foot dimension here that goes from the lot two property line over to the right-of-way line. The lot width is measured at the front yard setback line. And so it does exceed the 40-foot minimum that is, you know, requested in the code.
Actually, is it 40 feet plus?
So can I actually check that with the solicitor? The language in that code is a little vague. It is, it's actually two things. It is the lot width and separately, it's the front yard setback, as in the setback from a property line to the building line. That was the solicitor's reading of the code section.
So Eric, does that mean in your reading, a 47-foot distance is therefore compliant?
If that, so it's the minimum lot width in this district, which, Chris, is that, is it? And that would be per the zoning code, whatever that minimum lot width is. If they are meeting that minimum lot width, then that would be, that's the requirement of that saldo provision.
The minimum lot width is 40 feet per detached home.
Now, Eric, do we typically measure area in a right-of-way as part of a lot width? I don't believe so.
I was measuring to the right-of-way line, not inside of the right-of-way.
So it kind of, it says a saldo code provision that refers back to essentially the zoning requirements. And I believe, I think the lot width is to the right-of-way, is at the right-of-way line of the property. Let me see, you are measuring property line to the right, is that measuring to the right-of-way?
Yes, yeah, to this right-of-way line here, not the title line, which is in the center of the street. So to the right-of-way line.
Okay, so now would be measured properly then?
Right, okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So in regard to the letter from MCPC, there were a couple of small issues in regard to compliance with the screen buffers. Is that something that you are able to do under landscape design, compliant with the screen, the screen buffers around a trash or dumpster or recycling area?
Yes, absolutely. We can add shrub materials around that trash dumpster. It already includes the fencing.
How would that occur where you have spot 14? Would you remove that parking spot?
Well, the trash receptacle is included here. This is just simply paving that is an approach to pick up the trash. So I think the code would include wrapping this area right here. You know, and I think there would be some evidence that, you know, some of these trees already contribute to the buffering of that particular facility. You know, and I would also point out that there's very little sort of public exposure of this. We can add the shrub materials and are happy to do that.
Okay. Any questions about any of this as we go on? Let's see. I'm going to look at Kevin Walsh's letter of June 9th, since he's not here. He, number two, he refers to heights of retaining walls. Lot four, you've already addressed the retaining wall in lot four. He also asked that the retaining wall in lot two, the height he identified. We don't have the benefit of your new plans. Can you tell us what the height of that retaining wall is?
Eric, that one in lot two was a maximum of three feet. So we're good with that. When it was lot four, where we exceeded the six, and so we revised it so we were no more than 60 feet.
Okay. I apologize. Kevin Walsh and I had some back and forth about some questions, and he had a little further guidance, which he told me that he was going to email you, and I found out that he didn't. But the question that arose from our correspondence was that lot three, the frontage buildout, he believes should be 39 feet or 19 and a half feet per unit, not, I believe you have 42 feet. So I guess, I know you haven't, you probably have not had a chance to evaluate that.
Well, I guess, you know, we have zoning charts for both Lower Marion and Norbert and have had those on there since the tentative sketch plans. And we show the frontage buildout that's not applicable because that's in Lower Marion.
Okay, but you're intended then to try to comply with both codes, right? So that's not something you're able to comply with? So by the way, on those charts, maybe you could clarify for me. I know this is a Lower Marion matter, but the frontage chart for Lower Marion says the maximum frontage is 20 feet, but you have 21 feet for your frontages. Am I just misreading the chart? Let me look at it.
I think that's setback lines.
What, setback line?
Yeah, that's a setback. It's a minimum of 10, a maximum of 20, and the setback from the third line is 20.
Okay, so that's not it, okay.
That's correct. The minimum, minimum front yard is 10, the maximum is 20. And we had, through the tentative sketch phase, we pushed the buildings back as far as possible so that now, I believe, the front of the porches was at that 20-foot line.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misread that. So my only other question is, and then I'll open it up to other zoning, is are there building height calculations on any of these sheets?
Yeah.
I was looking, I couldn't find them. I'm curious about the building height calculation for lot two. Some of the, again, it's a lot of data. So it feels to me like some of it might be off, but it might be just hard to process it off. What page are those building height calculations on?
It is, they're on page five. And so they're in the bottom left-hand side. There's average grade calculations for Lower Marion and for Norbert. And we do comply. We did have to make a minor change to, I think it was lot two was the one we had to make a little change to, to make that work. But we did, and so we are, we are good on the height.
So I see these tables. Which ones apply to Lower Marion and which ones apply to Norbert? I see existing, I see proposed, average grade, even average grade of 255.4.
For lot two, we have a proposed first floor, which is the same for both the midpoint of the roof and the peak of roof, which are the same regardless of which municipality. But then we have the, Norbert's building height is measured to, from the average grade to the midpoint of the roof, and so it's 34 feet. Whereas the Lower Marion building height is measured to the peak of the roof, and so it's 40 feet.
I guess I was, what I was thrown off was, I'm looking at the architectural designs. The architectural designs sheet for lot two, on the rear elevation, say the grade at the garage door is 254.4. But it's hard for me to tell where the garage door is, though. When I look at, when I look at the topo, it looks like it's a different amount. It looks like the 254 line comes through the garage, but that the garage door itself is at 253.7. So, and I thought, God, well, if that's off by foot, does that mean the height of the building is off?
Yeah, so if there's a discrepancy there, we can correct it. But what I'll tell you is that the architectural plans, you know, we use from that first floor to either midpoint of roof or peak of roof. And then you have to kind of go to the, to the civil plans to find the average grade and then to figure it out. And so I could take another look at those and make sure there's not a discrepancy there.
Yeah, maybe they were just calculated at different times.
These are existing contours that you see here in the dotted lines.
Right, but I think that's how we measure, we measure from the existing perimeter building.
I'm just saying, between the discrepancy of the slab elevations and the contours, because the inlet elevations and the top of wall elevations are a lot closer to the slab elevation.
If there's an, I guess, let's put it this way. If there's an error in, on the architectural plan on an elevation, it's, the building height is still correct if you look at the height from like first floor to peak of roof. You know what I mean? Like if they're, but I can make sure there's not any.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems like the numbers on the architectural drawings are inconsistent with the numbers on the grade calculation. I actually haven't seen it before.
Todd, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, go ahead, Jim.
Do these buildings have to comply to the omnibus revisions for building? They do not?
No, this application was submitted last year originally.
Even though we haven't had elevations until now?
I believe that would be correct. Do you remember, Samantha, we weren't here. So I think we actually received these in the fall last year, first received them. So that would be grandfathered into the previous code. Because yes, the building height calculation would be totally different now. It'd be around the perimeter of the lot, not the building. But I did check that night. I think we approved this in January before council voted, which means we would have been working on it long before this was out there.
I understand the argument that since we haven't had building height information before now, I don't equivalve whether we've approved, that it conforms to the building, you know, to the prescribed building height before now.
Well, I can check with the solicitor. My interpretation is, since this sort of application originally came to us before we passed our zoning revisions, before we advertised them in December and passed them in January, that it would be the rules that would apply. Those would be the rules that would apply. Are there any other, are there any other questions about any kind of zoning compliance issues? Yes?
Yes, okay. So I apologize if this has been answered somewhere else before, but these buildings, they present as if they're twins, but they are not twins. They're sitting on, each building is sitting on one lot, one undivided lot. So according to our code, they are multi-family, they're two-family, multi-family. And I'm wondering, first of all, the first question, the internal architecture of these buildings, are, do they also, are they designed internally as twins? Is there a parting wall?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then my other follow-up question to that is, for multi-family houses in Norbert, we don't allow more than one entrance, front door, within 12 feet of facade? And each of these seems to have two.
I can answer that. So the, for Lower Marion, we're calling them twins because that fits within their definition. For Norbert, it's a detached house, a two-family detached house. And so I believe it does meet the requirements of the Norbert two-family. We're not calling it a multi-family in Norbert.
Does that seem, do we allow that kind of housing type? Is this an allowable housing type in Norbert? I guess would be my last question. Because it doesn't seem like it's one or the other, like it's both a multi-family and a twin.
Let me read the definition, and we can discuss this. Whether, the question is whether this should be considered a multi-family house or a detached house. We don't have a single-family house, it's called a detached house. I'll read you the definitions. I did have some discussion with Kevin Walsh about this, but I'll let you.
Yeah. I'm sorry. So this is my, I'm sorry, this is Samantha Bryant, Borough Manager. So this is my first review here, but as part of review of this application, wouldn't the Borough zoning officer have made a determination as to the use, what use applies to the property as part of his review and as part of the engineer's review?
The zoning officer has made a determination that this is a detached house building type, which is defined in our code and which is consistent with what the applicant has put on their application since the beginning, a detached building type. And the zoning officer has made that determination. However, sometimes we check the zoning officer's work.
Well, I would say that, I mean, if there's any concerns about that, I'm certainly welcome to take it up with the zoning officer. But I think for the sake of the applicant, I feel like if that's what the Borough zoning officer has determined the use to be, you know, in certain places, I understand you asking about it. But I do think, you know, it is, you know, the Borough House Engineer and the zoning officer, you know, help answer questions like these.
We also do this for the public's benefit because these questions come up. And so it's good to kind of go through these to make sure everyone understands how these determinations work. That's why, that's why we go to the code and we read it and we say, okay, that's why we check. For example, the zoning officer determined in his email that the application would require waiver for the corner lot. But we just determined by discussing with the applicant that it probably doesn't because it's compliant. So we checked the zoning officer's work, the Borough Engineer included that, the Montgomery County Planning Commission, but that's why we go over this. It's complicated, and sometimes we just have to check it over.
Yeah, maybe at some point we can have, you know, more of a conversation about that as well, Todd?
Sure, of course. And the other thing is, we just, you know, this was not originally in Kevin's letter, and this sort of, this was carried by email, so it's good to talk about it at a meeting because no one's had the benefit of discussing this yet. So the definition of a detached house is a separate or disconnected house designed as a dwelling for fewer than three families. So a detached house can have one or two families, and that's the definition. So that's why the determination is that this is a detached house.
Detached house.
Yeah. Now, what's tricky about this is a, a multi-family house is defined as a building occupied between two or five dwelling units organized as a single structure with or without a shared entrance to some or all the dwellings. Right?
Yeah.
And moreover, in the, in the, that's the definition. And then in the section of the zoning code where we talk about house types, the definition of a multi-family house is a multi-family house is a detached house type with two to five dwellings within the structure. Todd, so.
Following, following on to that, in that section, it says a twin house is a housing type with two dwellings sharing a common vertical party wall with one family living in each dwelling.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last one?
A twin house is a housing type with two dwellings sharing a common vertical party wall with one family living in each dwelling.
So it is a twin house?
I think the, the difference is the definition of twin requires that the party wall is on a lot line.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
And there's no lot line here.
There's not, yeah, sorry, new here.
And so the question is that whether or not the house would properly be, the building would properly be considered a, a detached house or a multi-family house. And Kevin's guidance on this is that there's not a significant difference because a detached building house requires 6,000 square feet of lot area overall, not 6,000 square feet per dwelling. And by, by comparison, a twin house proposal would require only 3,000 square feet per dwelling, or 6,000 square feet. So it doesn't really make a difference from the lot area point of view. The only difference it makes is in how the, how the entrance to this building is.
Well, it would also make a difference for lot coverage, where the coverage occurs.
I don't think coverage is dependent on the building type because of.
Well, you wouldn't be able to exceed lot coverage on a twin lot anymore than you could.
Well, no, but that's not the question. The question is whether it's a multi-family house or a detached one, right? No one is arguing this is a twin house. The gray area is whether it's a, a multi-family house or a detached house. Kevin's determination is it's a detached house and he said it makes no difference in terms of the lot area anyway. The only difference I can see is it makes a difference in terms of how the facade is, is, is designed. Now, this, this is something that he's been looking at over just the last couple of days by email, so it's not anything anyone else has had a chance to consider yet. But that is his determination on this. Though he admits that's a gray area in the code, he feels in this case that is the appropriate designation of this house. So. Mike, I guess, are there any questions about that or does that seem inappropriate to you?
So a detached house can have two?
Two, two.
Yeah, so, okay.
That's according to our code.
Okay.
So are there any other questions or issues related to the zoning or SADA compliance? Okay. At this point, I will ask if there's any comments. If there are no further comments from the planning commissioners, are there any comments from the public? And I don't know that there's anyone here. Is anyone here like to make a comment? Okay, so I would ask if anyone is still with us by Zoom and you would like to make a comment, could you please indicate so in the chat or raise your hand so that we can recognize you? I brought your cable back. Is there anyone in the public who wants to make a comment? I don't see anyone in the public.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Dave, would you like to go ahead?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Bressi. A couple of comments. One, I had sent a question a couple of months ago and I think I may have asked this prior and I was just wondering how the traffic engineers for the developer of the townships took into account the additional developments that were going on in Narberth. I think there's a mention of it beforehand, but we have this development. We have another one being proposed on Elmwood. If I'm looking at my notes correctly, we have Dudley, Marion, Sabine, Haverford Avenue, Montgomery Avenue, Forest and Windsor, Forest and Haverford, Forest and Essex. And if my calculations are right, this is over 170 new livable units. And in the past, we've used a reference of there's one and a half cars per livable unit. So how did the traffic studies take into consideration about 255 additional cars? Were they looking at just this one development in the traffic study? Or were they taking into consideration the developments that are currently being proposed when looking at this?
I, I do believe that was answered earlier tonight, but I'll ask Mr. Tivani, could you please answer that briefly? I know you've answered it in your letter and we discussed it earlier, but could you give a brief response, please?
Mr. Bressi, Frank had to drop off around nine o'clock tonight, so he's not still there, but you're correct, I think. He did address it by, he, he did research some of those developments, take a look at some generation for them, not just in what's proposed, but in a comparison to what was there before. And I think in his analysis, it didn't really have a meaningful effect. However, I think he did agree to continue discussing that with Mike Schneider to confirm.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'd like to get, maybe he, if he wants to contact me offline because I don't, I heard his, a brief comment earlier. I don't know where he's getting that at, though. When I look at what was there before, what's there now and what's being proposed, how it could have a little, how it could have little impact. If we're assuming based upon the comprehensive plan that half of the people in the borough commute to work by car, I'm not sure for, you know, looking at, I, I don't know where he would be getting that from. So I guess that's my first comment or question. The other one is for the owners of the proposed development is, I understand these are homes that will be sold. So what, what is the approximate sales price of the homes that you're looking at right now? And I guess my second question or follow-up would be, are the properties part of the Narberth Borough or are they considered Lower Marion for purposes of property and school taxes? Well, school taxes, I know, would all go Lower Marion. Are these considered, is this for tax generation standpoint? Is this part of the Narberth Borough or is it part of Lower Marion?
So I guess in terms of, David, I, I know you, you've raised this question many times, I have, about the, the traffic impact. I, I think to be fair to the applicant, the question has been asked and answered. We had extensive conversations with the applicant. Their findings are, are documented. The applicant has agreed to have further conversations with our traffic engineer to double check, to double check that. And I, I think Mr. Yon, Mr. Yon outlined their findings, the traffic. I, I, I'm hopeful that the most recent version of Mr. Vani's work, is that, is that posted? Has that been submitted and posted by the borough, the, the updated? Chris, do you know if the, the updated traffic study that Mr. Tivani referred to was submitted to the borough and, and posted by any chance?
On, I don't know if it's posted. I know that on Friday, I emailed a Dropbox link to all of the documents that we submitted to Lower Marion. So it's, it's part of that. It's not an updated study. Instead, it's a response to Mr. Schneider's review. And so I believe it's a three-page document that includes supplemental information.
So that is not formally submitted to the borough, I don't believe. So we cannot post it as part of our documents, but I guess it is available on the Lower Marion Township page. And I do know that as one outcome of tonight's meeting, that, that the applicant agreed to discuss further with Mike, our traffic engineer, how that is, how that's being taken into account. But I, I do think Mr. Yon gave a succinct answer to the question, which is that the impact on the intersection seems to be minimal. And I think Mr. Tivani stated earlier today that the, the impact of traffic generated by this development will be, will be very minimal. I want to assure you that we're asking applicants to look at these cumulative impacts, but and we've had direct, specific conversations with them about this, but we have followed up on your request, but this is, this is what they're finding. And then the reports, the reports they generate when we receive them, we will, we will post them so you can review them.
Right, I, I agree with, with that specific development. I understand that. I'm speaking, we work as a, as a whole. But, and I'll move on from that question. As I mentioned before, the other two questions I had was for the owner of the proposed development is what would be the approximate sales price of the home, you know, that are to be developed? And then the other question was, are the properties part of the Narberth Borough or Lower Marion as it relates to property tax purposes?
I, I'll ask the applicant if they care to answer the first question or not, and I will ask the borough manager to answer the second question.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the first question, I would say at this point, I'm still waiting to finish, you know, what the approved plans are. It's a little bit early to come up with a price. I'd like to offer the, you know, the most affordable housing that I can, but as you can see, things are changing. So I don't know what my cost will be exactly into the project, so it will vary a little bit. So at this time, I wouldn't be prepared to give a, a price.
Right, but do you have a range? I mean, I can't imagine that you wouldn't have a range. I mean, I, I work with developers, you know, in my own business and they're always discussing a range.
Yeah, I mean, I, at this point, we're going to be probably up in the $800,000 range, but I don't know exactly. I mean, I hate to blurt things out because they change so much and I would hate for somebody to come back to me later and say, well, you said this, but I also don't know all the information at this time, so how could I?
Completely answered my question. Just, it was just a range. I'm not holding you to any, to anything. Yeah, no, not at all, that's fine. And then the other question, I guess Samantha, you could answer is, from a property tax standpoint of view, do the revenues for these properties for a tax purpose, are they borough gener, are they going to be generating revenue to the borough or is it Lower Marion Township?
And, and I think that Todd had suggested the borough manager might take a crack at that answer.
Right, and that's.
All right, just let Samantha, what's your, what's the current information on that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Bressi. So, you know, I came from working in Bubbs County. I still have to find out specifically how Montgomery County handles this, which I absolutely will for the planning commission and to answer your question. In Bubbs County, the, you know, tax collection agencies that I dealt with had what they called the front door rule, which was when a municipal boundary went through a, went through the middle of a building, which happens more often than you think it would. You know, the rule was wherever the main entrance to the property was or the front door of the property was, that would be the municipality that would receive the tax revenue. However, I have to check with the, you know, with Montgomery County and maybe folks in Lower Marion might know a little bit about that as well. So you had a definitive answer and I can absolutely get back to the planning commission and to you about that.
Okay, great. Thanks, Brian. I appreciate it.
And I'll underscore that, I know that's a matter of public interest, but it's not, has no bearing on the approval of this project. But it is a matter of public interest, I understand. Are there any other questions from the public?
Yeah, Todd, I have, I have one quick question. It's Ara Winston.
Hi, Ara, how are you?
Great. One of the design professionals mentioned a gathering place as a place where people might cross the crosswalk and gather. But isn't that on private property? Would that be allowed?
Would someone from the applicant's team explain how that, how that would work, I guess, from a, from a legal point of view?
Well, well, a legal point of, I, I can't address the legal point of view. I think I was the one that made the comment about that it would be, I, I think a strategic place for people to gather simply because of its position near the crosswalk at the traffic light at East Winwood Road and North Winwood Avenue. And, and really, that's all I said, that it would be a place for people to meet.
We will be providing an easement for that area, the public gathering space.
And would that be to the borough or some other party?
I guess that'll have to be discussed whether it's the borough or whether it's Lower Marion. I think that's an, I think it's mostly Lower Marion area.
So there'd be an easement that allowed for public access of some sort?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Todd answers my question.
Are there any other questions from the public? Okay. At this point, any other, at this point, I encourage discussion or comments by planning commissioners. Your thoughts on this and how, well, the applicant has addressed the concerns that have been raised and. Go around, everyone can make a comment. Doesn't have to be in that order. No comments at this point?
No comment.
Okay. Anyone care to make a comment? Okay. My dilemma here is I don't feel that we are prepared to vote. We've not seen the, although there's, there are minor changes, we have not seen the submission that the, updated submission that the applicant made. I know we got a link on Friday, but it was, you know, it was only submitted formally to Lower Marion Township. The staff hasn't had a chance to look at it or our consultants haven't had a chance to look at it. And we have not yet, although it's, it's usually performed out, had a chance to ask the applicant to respond to all the little comments, some of the more administrative comments as well. And so we know unless something has changed in the schedule that our timing is such that Borough Council is required to vote on this at its July meeting, I believe, to be consistent with the, with the, with the timeframe in which we are required to act on this application. I would like to ask the applicant if they would consider one of two options. One is, we have two more planning commission meetings scheduled. We have one next week, which is to hear the application from 146 Marion Avenue. And we have one on July 12th. The primary purpose of that will be to hear public comment on our proposed historic district ordinance. So both of those will be busy meetings. So one, one option I would ask you to consider is whether you would allow us to schedule our final consideration of this at one of those meetings. Or given that those will be very, those will be busy meetings, if you would consider us getting final consideration to this at our August meeting, which would require an extension. I don't know if I'm authorized to ask that without asking the solicitor first, but I'd like to ask what your, what your sense would be of how we move forward. Because I don't think we're prepared to vote, to vote this evening. We'll need to have further time to review the letters and responses and nail down a few more things before we could, we could make a vote. Do you have a preference as to how, how you would like to proceed?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Bressi, I, I confess to being a little bit confused. If this were to be considered by the planning commission either next week or on July 12th, would there be any necessity for an extension? Does the Borough Council not meet in July following the 12th? And this would, in fact, I think they've got a single meeting in July that does indeed follow the 12th. So that if it were, this were reviewed at either of those meetings, I don't think an extension would be necessary. And we would certainly hope that the planning commission, given the extensive discussion which occurred tonight and, you know, the reduction of issues that would need to be addressed and points that would need to be addressed, hopefully. addressed and points that would need to be addressed, hopefully could consider it at one of those meetings so that it could be acted on by Borough Council in July.
Are you, we do have one council meeting in July, correct?
That is correct.
That is still scheduled. Are you aware of any other reasons why the borough might ask for this to be?
I guess my biggest concern would be, I'd need to talk with, with Eric and Kevin about this. If, like, let's say tomorrow, we got the formal application, the materials that were provided to Lower Marion Township and all that. Traditionally, my understanding is that the borough has needed three weeks to provide an adequate review. I don't know if, given that this project has already been through a number of reviews, if that would be the case or not. So my only concern would be, and maybe not necessarily put Eric on the spot here and Mike on the spot, because I know Mike wants, you know, we talked about Mike having some conversations with the traffic engineer for the applicant. I just want to make sure on our end and the applicant's end, that if you discuss this at one of your upcoming meetings, that all that information would be, you know, ready in that timeframe. So I mean, you know, if the borough, if the planning commission wants to do it, you know, the borough can certainly try to do it. I just want to make sure we gave some thought to that component of it as well.
But I mean, it's our obligation to act on this application by, you know, the council meeting in July unless there's some reason for the borough and the applicant to act, to agree on an extension, right?
Mr. Bressi, I'm having a hard time hearing you, forgive me for that.
I apologize, Mr. Fraunhold. I was just saying to the borough manager that, you know, as far as I understand, it's our obligation, the borough's obligation to act on this application in July unless there's some reason...
Well, I'm, I'm all...
Unless there's some reason to request a delay as a result of, you know, factors of why information is needed in general. So I think, I think what I'd like to suggest, Mr. Fraunhold, is that the, the timing of the borough's review and preparedness to act on this is really a conversation that's above our pay grade. And that it would be appropriate for you and the solicitor and the borough manager to determine whether or not that July target is, is reasonable from all parties' views. And if, if it's determined that, that is the case, then the planning commission would be, I think probably July 12th is more realistic for us to bring this back on our agenda so that we can offer, make a vote and recommendation to council on this application. So I, you know, I, I guess that's what I would, what I would suggest. And I wonder, if we could be agreeable in working out the scheduling of this with the, to hear whatever concerns the borough manager may have at this point or solicitor may have about the scheduling of this, and then the planning commission will make sure it is scheduled so we can vote on it when we need to.
Yeah, sure. And I'm just thinking here, and Chris, you jump in or burn if you have other thoughts. And that is, given the coordination that may be anticipated here with PANDOT, which I assume everything being equal, the planning commission would like to know the outcome of any of those discussions, the July meeting might be better for you to make a fully, a more fully informed recommendation to Borough Council. And assuming you could hear this in July, then it would be able to get on Borough Council's agenda. And I, I think they will have seen this for the first time at that meeting. But having the benefit of your recommendation, if it's a fuller, more complete, confident recommendation from the planning commission, I assume that would facilitate council's consideration of this at their July meeting. It's always possible for some reason, somebody would request that we extend the time for action, but I think that might put us all in the best position to have this fairly considered by council in, at their July meeting.
Okay. I am aware, I believe Lower Marion's planning commission also meets July 12th, is that correct? So we'd have to iron out that conflict in scheduling since you can't be at two meetings at once. But let's, let's, I'm happy to put this in the hands of the borough manager and then we'll hear back how, how you'd like to proceed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that, that would be fine.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Okay. So with that, thank you all. I appreciate your time and patience going through these questions. I, I always believe it's important to talk about these things thoroughly so the public's questions are answered and they understand how these decisions are thought. Bruce, I appreciate your, your time in going through things in such detail.
And Mr. Bressi, on behalf of the applicant, and I think we all share this view, we appreciate all the time that you and the other members of the planning commission have given this and also the advisory committees who have given time and borough staff and the engineers, zoning officer, there's been a lot of time and thought that's been given to this right from the outset. When, we have come a long way, as you know, from the original plan that had been submitted. Great progress was made with the approved tentative sketch plan and, and I think it's only getting better as a result of these reviews.
Thank you. Thank you all for your effort. As it is late, I will again thank you and then ask our last agenda item is if there is public comment on any other matters before the planning commission. I do see a number of members in the public here, so if you have a question or comment you'd like to make, please let us know in the chat or otherwise indicate so that we can recognize you. Does anyone here like to make a comment or raise a question? Okay. I'm not missing anybody. Seeing no members in the public who'd like to offer a comment, I'd like to ask for motion to adjourn.
Some move?
Any moves? It's her second.
Second.
Everybody seconded that. Okay, all in favor? None opposed. Thanks, everyone, very, very much, and we'll see you again. Fred and Chris, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.